Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. There are, you may not know this, but you are attending two meetings tonight. And I'd like to start off with, well, the two meetings are the meeting of the City Council, and then, of course, the meeting of the Geological Hazard Abatement District Board. And the Geological Hazard Abatement Board meeting will take first. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Ms., well, before we do that, if Councilmember Bonilla can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand if you're able.
And then, if I can ask Ms. Morrison to please take a roll.
I'd be happy to. Let's see, Board Member Syrup?
President.
Board Member Salinas?
President.
Board Member Bonilla?
President.
Board Member Zermeño?
President.
Board Member Goldstein?
President.
Board Member Andrews?
President.
And we'll note for the record that Board Member Roche is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, this is reserved for anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment regarding the GAD. I know there's other public comments, but if you have a public comment regarding the GAD, I will take that. Well, hold on a second. Before I move on to public comments, let the record reflect that Mayor or Director Roche has, is in the building. She is in the room. So next, I'd like to move to public comments. This is reserved for anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment on something that is not on the agenda of the GAD meeting. And seeing no public comment on the GAD, and I don't see any, I do see one hand up, I do see one hand up, but it just came up and it went down, and I think the hand that is up is probably for the council meeting, not the GAD meeting. And so I will, I will pause on that. I will close public comment, and then I will move on to consent, to the consent calendar. Nobody has asked me to pull anything off of the consent calendar, and I'll entertain motion questions or... Moved by Director Zermeño, seconded by Director Andrews. And before we take a vote, I'd like to open up for a public comment on the consent. Seeing none, I will close public comment on the consent calendar, and then move on to Clerk Morrison. If you can, please take a roll.
Board Member Syrup?
Yes.
Board Member Roche?
Here.
Board Member Salinas? I'll register that as a yes.
Sorry, yes, thank you.
Minutes, thank you. Board Member Salinas?
Yes.
Board Member Bonilla?
Yes.
Board Member Zermeño?
Chief.
Board Member Goldstein?
Yes.
And Board Member Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carries with the unanimous approval of the minutes of October 28, 2025.
Thank you. Next on the GAD agenda is Legislative Business, Item 2, Resolution 25-03, holding a public hearing to approve the annexation of the parcel Group III development into the Hayward Geological Hazard Abatement District and approving the draft plan of control for the parcel III development. And this will be kicked off by our GAD manager, Haley Rolston.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair and Board members. I'm Haley Rolston, a geologist with NGO who serves as the GAD manager. I'm here, I'm joined here by Emma Morrison, who serves as GAD Clerk and GAD Legal Counsel for the Hayward GAD. I know there's a lot of people here today, so I'll briefly just mention what the Hayward GAD is. Hayward GAD, Geological Hazard Abatement District, includes just a few developments off Tennyson and Mission in Hayward, the Reserve Development, the Hideaway Development, the Hayward-Somi Development, and soon to be the Parcel Group III development that we're discussing this evening. The purpose of the GAD is to allow communities to group together to be able to respond to geologic hazards that may have the potential to impact their improvements or residences. And so, City of Hayward thought it was a great idea to require a GAD for these developments as they tend to be within the hillsides of Hayward and near the Hayward Fault. And so the GAD will be a great entity to help respond to those if anything was to happen. So just wanted to mention that for those who may not be aware. But we have two, we have two items tonight for the Board related to the Parcel Group III development. I'll provide a brief staff report for the first one, and then we'll discuss that one, and then I'll provide a second staff report for the second item as well. So before the Board right now is Resolution 2503, holding a public hearing on the approval of the annexation of the Parcel Group III development to the Hayward GAD and approving the draft plan of control for the Parcel Group III development. On October 28, 2025, the GAD Board approved Resolution 2502, accepting the petition for annexation, and set a public hearing for today, December 2, 2025, for the approval of the petition for annexation for the Parcel Group III development into the GAD and approval of the draft plan of control for the development. The plan of control outlines the GAD's responsibilities specifically within the Parcel Group III development only, and this plan of control is separate from the other plans and controls prepared for each of the other developments within the GAD. So for this item, GAD staff recommend that GAD Board of Directors adopt 2503, and we're available for any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you. I will open up first for questions from the Board. Seeing none, I will close questions from the Board. I will open up for public comment. I do not have public comment cards on this item. I do not see anybody online, so I will close public comment, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Director Goldstein, seconded by Director Syrup. And if there are no further questions, Madam City Clerk Morrison, if you can please take a roll.
If, if the Board would opt to use your electronic voting system?
Oh, yeah.
That would be terrific. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, we're gonna have to do a roll call. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you could see it now in your...
Oh, but Director Roche does not have access to the, to the vote, so maybe if you wanna...
Okay, sure. Let's see, this is a motion to approve annexation of Parcel Group III and also approve the draft plan of control. Board Member Roche?
Yes.
Board Member Syrup?
Yes.
Chair Salinas?
Yes.
Board Member Bonilla?
Yes.
Board Member Zermeño?
Yes.
Board Member Goldstein?
Yes.
And Board Member Andrews?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, which is Resolution 25-03, holding a public hearing to approve the annexation of the Parcel Group III develop, Parcel Group III development into the Hayward...
I'm going to check. Item 3, LB 2504, correct?
Yes, that's what I'm reading.
I'm reading the...
No, that's exactly what I'm reading. Resolution 25-3, holding a public hearing to approve the annexation of Parcel Group III development into the Hayward Geological Hazard Abatement District and approving the draft plan of control for the Parcel III, Parcel Group III development. And our GAD manager, Haley Rolston, will kick this off.
Thank you, Chair Salinas. I, I think that the motion was written correctly. I apologize, but the item included here that we show on the agenda is Resolution 2504, declaring GAD's intent to order an assessment for the Parcel Group III development and set a public hearing at least 45 days after written notices provided to consider the proposed assessment and any protest thereto. Do you have that as well?
So on my agenda, I have Item 2, Resolution 25-03.
Correct, that we had just?
Yeah.
We had just approved?
Yes.
And then I don't, is number three on your agenda Resolution 25-04?
25-044, yes.
That, okay, that I just read it into the record, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay. So Resolution 2504 declares the GAD's intent to order an assessment for the Parcel Group III development and set a public hearing at least 45 days after written notices provided to consider the proposed assessment and any protest thereto. With the approval of Resolution 2503, we just had, the GAD Board approved the plan of control for the Parcel Group III development, but in order to secure a funding source for the Parcel Group III development, an engineer's report has been prepared in accordance with Proposition 218 to identify the funding mechanism for the GAD maintained improvements within the Parcel Group III development and as described in the plan of control just approved. Since the product types within the Parcel Group III development are considered multifamily and habitable non-residential buildings, the engineer's report recommends an assessment limit of about 25 cents per square foot of habitable space per, for each building, which is a little bit different than the other developments in the GAD that are based on per-residence or residential type. And this assessment limit will be subject to annual consumer price index adjustment for the San Francisco-Oakland-Hayward area. There's approximately a total of 215,000 square feet of habitable space within the Parcel Group III development, and the anticipated or estimated annual budget for GAD operations within the Parcel Group III development of the GAD is about $54,000 a year in current fiscal year dollars, $25, $26. The Parcel Group III development assessment limit will not impact the existing assessments for the existing landowners, landowners in the other developments within the GAD. The Hayward GAD does share a reserve fund against, with all of the developments in the GAD. However, each development's engineer's report specifies each development's contribution to the GAD over, over the life of the GAD, which coincides with the scope, the GAD's scope of responsibilities and geotechnical risk. Staff recommendation is for the Board to approve Resolution 2504 to declare the GAD's intent to order an assessment for the Parcel Group III development and set a public hearing date for January 25th, or sorry, January 27, 2026, which is at least 45 days after written notice will be provided to the property owners within the Parcel Group III development in accordance with Proposition 218. And GAD staff are available for any questions the Board may have.
Thank you. And I think the confusion was, when I read Item 2, I read LB 25-043 into the record, and when I turned the page, I did not read the LB, I just went straight to the paragraph. But just for the record, Item number 3 is LB 25-44, and so, so that's what we are talking about right now, so.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
No worries.
And the paragraphs literally read the same, so that's why I think the confusion was too. So, okay, Director Roche.
Thank you, thank you for the report. So this is the new development up on Tennyson, right, that, with the school that was gonna be there?
Correct.
But my understanding, there isn't a school, is that right?
I guess...
Or does that not matter for the assessment, anyway?
It may not matter for the assessment if there's still, it does not matter if there's still a habitable or residential, but if that has changed from a school to some other facility, that it would still be subject to this assessment.
Okay. And because this is a multifamily building, which is, I think they're rentals, right? So that's why we're, we're going after the owner of the building instead?
Correct.
For the assessment, not the individual. But will that fee still be transferred to their rent? Will the renters still be paying?
We do not, we do not control that as, as the GAD. We just place or work with the county to place the assessment on the parcel.
Okay.
And so it would be the property owner to take on...
It would be their decision.
Correct.
Oh, so that full amount, so there isn't some sort of like, you know, they can only ask for 20% of it, for example, for the renter? You don't control that at all?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's interesting. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will close Director's comments and questions, open up for public comment. I do not have any cards, and I do not see anybody online, so I will close public comment, return to the Board, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Roche, seconded by Director Bonilla. And just to be clear, we are moving Item number 3, LB 25044. And with that, it looks like Director Roche is back online, so let's see if we can use And motion passes, seven eyes unanimously, with seven eyes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to GAD Manager's report, Ms. Rolston.
Not too much from the last report from last meeting. We've completed fall monitoring, site looks good, and we're getting ready for winter, and we'll be ready to respond based on how the winter goes. Every year, it's different in California. And the other item, I know that was request of us last meeting, was to meet with a couple of the council members regarding public safety and such in the GAD, and so we'll, we'll be working on scheduling that as the council members are available.
Thank you. Next is GAD Board Members' Reports, referral, and future agenda items. There are, Director Syrup?
Thank you. I am curious, given the La Vista Park Project's proximity to GAD's boundaries and also its properties, I'm curious, and I'd like to explore at some point if there are any benefits to GAD's involvement with the La Vista Park Project. Is there a way for us to utilize GAD's hazard abatement services to help drive down or contribute to the overall project costs? Because that park is on a hillside, it would be a benefit to GAD members as well as to Hayward residents. And given our budget constraints as a city, you know, any way that we can advance this La Vista Park project through, you know, inter-agency collaboration would be great to understand the feasibility of.
Yes, would you like me to respond now? Perfect. So technically, yes, the La Vista Park is included within the GAD's boundaries. It was included with the Reserve Development's boundary, and there were initially laid out in the Reserve's plan of control responsibilities for the GAD related to the park, but obviously some time has passed since that, and development has changed for that, so we would need to look at that again to see what was originally, you know, approved under the GAD's plan of control and engineer's report that can apply to any changes, or see what else could be done. But I would say primarily, it would be related to, you know, any maintenance of drainage facilities or geologic hazard abatement.
An update on that would be great for this Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, there are no referrals or future agenda items. Next meeting, there are no future meetings scheduled, and all future meetings will be notified or be noticed. And with that, I will like to adjourn the GAD. And are there, are there any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify, as mentioned in the last staff report, that we're looking to schedule the next board meeting for January 27, 2025, for the public hearing related to this resolution.
Great, thank you. Mark your calendars. All right, all right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
And then we'll take about five minutes to transition. Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you, everybody, and welcome back. Now I'd like to convene the Hayward City Council meeting, and welcome everyone to the Hayward City Council meeting. And I would like to call upon our city attorney, Mr. Lawson, if you can do close session announcement.
The Council convened in closed session at 5:30. There were two items on the agenda. First, Council conferred with their labor negotiators, took no reportable action. Council conferred with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, also took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is public comment. This is reserved for people who would like to make a public comment on an item or on something that is not on the agenda. I do have plenty of cards here, and so what I'll do is I will, let me move, move to public comment, and I have quite a number of public comment. Before, before we start with public comment, I wanted to, you know, most of the folks in here, I'm sure, are related to the emails that we've been getting for the last week and over the weekend, and of course, we appreciate that. I also wanted to, you know, I have read all the emails and tried to keep up with all the emails. I have responded to all the emails as much as I could. I might have missed a couple, but I tried to get to all of them. And I, and I... And I, and I, you know, I wanted to first, you know, as I said in my email, I wanted to apologize for, you know, writing and sending the same email over and over and over to everybody who was sending this email. And, and the reason why I sent the, my email is primarily because the issue, everybody was essentially writing us on the same issue around cuts to the animal shelter, possibly closing the animal shelter, euthanizing animals starting immediately, and, and people losing their jobs, you know, immediately. And, and so what I want to say first, just to clear the air, and clearly, you know, a lot of you are here because of that. And I should also say as a caveat, I did look at over the past week, I did see, and you know, I'm sure all of us up here did, you know, social media was busy, Nextdoor was busy, Facebook was busy. A lot of people were posting all over social media about this. And, and I just, what I wanted to say to everybody, as I said in my email, the city council has no plan in front of our, in front of us regarding the animal shelter. There is no, we had, we have had no discussions about the animal shelter. There is no plan regarding the animal shelter right now. There are no plans for cuts to the animal shelter. There's no plan for cutting personnel on, in the animal shelter right now. And so I just, you know, I'm sure many of you have, maybe have heard from other sources and other people, but I'm telling you, from, from, from our point of view and from our position, we have not discussed this. And, and so I just wanted to say that in advance because the, the tone and the tenor of the emails to us sounded very specific, very precise as to we were going to take action tonight. There is nothing on the agenda regarding this tonight, and we're not taking action on anything related to animal services or the animal shelter tonight. I also just, if I were to just sort of break off decorum a little bit and give a little bit of an editorial, many of us up here are animal owners. I'm an animal owner. I have a dog. And I love my dog very much. My dog is very much one of my family members, as I'm sure all of you know. And, you know, over the week, I have received emails, maybe not from you, but, and I've also seen social media posts that have been ugly, that have been quite toxic, have been mean, have been rather threatening. And it, you know, it, I've been up here for a long time overseeing a lot of different, complicated, oftentimes controversial issues. And this issue, this issue precisely over the past week, a holiday weekend, it was horrible. It was absolutely horrible and, and mean. And like all of you, all of us, you know, many of us up here have pets. We love our pets. We respect our pets. They're part of our family. And, and I hope we're going to have public comment, and I hope we can engage in a civil discourse. We're listening. I understand that all of you volunteer in one way or another and have a very personal connection to our animal shelter. But I just, you know, like all of you, we have feelings too. And we have feelings towards our pets and our animals who, like you believe, are voiceless and, you know, and if it weren't for us, would not have a voice in, in the world. And we do as much as we can to make sure our four-legged friends, our family members are protected all the time. So I just wanted to sort of set that tone because I'm, typically what I would do with so many different, with so many speakers, I would cut public comment to a minute, but I will keep open, I will keep public comment open to three minutes. I would invite you, if you don't have three minutes and you don't take the whole three minutes, and if you agree with the speaker ahead of you, you can do what they do in Sacramento and say, I agree with the former speaker, and you can take your seat. But, but otherwise, let's, let's be civil, let's be polite, professional, and, and most of all, respectful and democratic. Okay. With that said, I'd like to call our first speaker, I believe it's Sheila Merrill. Yes.
Good evening. Since no action has been taken or agreed upon, consider this a proactive statement. My name is Sheila Merrill. I've lived in Hayward most of my life. My family moved to Hayward in 1948 when my dad, Ed Phillips, was hired by the city of Hayward. In 1955, Dad was promoted to Director Public Works. He retired in 1985. Much of what you see in Hayward today is a result of Dad's vision and hard work. Dad left a remarkable legacy. On November 7, 2023, the Hayward City Council voted and approved a 65.1% pay increase for itself and the mayor. Due to public outcry, on September 23, 2025, they voted to take a 6.5% pay cut and no cost of living increase. The net salary increase for the mayor and city council is 58.6% for the 2026 fiscal year. From 2004 to 2022, the city council waived all salary increases and cost of living adjustments. The current mayor and city council were legally advised that they could lump all of these cost of living adjustments not taken to arrive at a 65.1% pay increase, later reduced to 58.6. This may have been technically legal, but certainly violated the spirit of the law, particularly in light of Hayward's $30.6 million deficit for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. The Hayward Animal Shelter is a vital part of the community. I proudly volunteer alongside an extraordinary group of passionate animal lovers, some of whom have been volunteering at the shelter for decades. The city of Hayward wants to eliminate all part-time per diem staff at the shelter. This amounts to almost one-half of the shelter staff. Some of these per diem staff are the most experienced and valuable staff at the shelter. Their loss would have devastating consequences. The reality of the loss of these positions is that a majority of animals that will, that come into the shelter will be euthanized. There will be an adequate staff to socialize, assess, and carefully, and care for them. Animals are carefully screened and prepared for a second chance at a forever home. They deserve it. The mayor and council members who did not take cost of living raises for 18 years are to be commended. They made personal sacrifices to help keep Hayward financially stable. They put the needs of the community before themselves, the true definition of public service. The insistence on this massive raise during the city's financial crisis by the current mayor and city council is irresponsible and self-serving. Your hubris and sense of entitlement is a disgrace. You're condemning helpless animals to death to line your pockets. Is this the legacy you want to leave? This is not a good look for Hayward. If Dad were still with us, I know he would be saying, what happened to the Hayward I loved and helped build? He would be ashamed.
Thank you. Our, our next speaker is Gloria Villa Senor.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to speak on something that happened last year and more recently, the day after Thanksgiving. Last year, we had a cat that passed away right in front of my home. We called in Animal Services and they weren't able to come before the deceased animal started to, ant started to get on it. And I live right by Burbank Elementary, so, so that the poor kids wouldn't see that animal, we had to take care of ourselves. And the day after Thanksgiving, my husband went into our backyard and there was what we thought was a decapitated cat in our backyard. And we called Animal Services Friday in the morning, and they didn't come. So I had to call Friday afternoon. Nobody came. They didn't come until Saturday till 2:00 in the afternoon. So I actually think we need more help with Animal Services, not less. And I understand that nothing's going to happen, but they're very overworked, they have a lot to do, and it's something that is very vital to, I think, people that live in Hayward and pay taxes. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it's not just the animal shelter, but it's all the animals. And if you were to cut ours, I would love to see Hayward do a TNR program because a lot of people, including myself, pay for animals out of our own pockets to get TNR, feed stray animals on the street out of our own pocket. I see people on Nextdoor having to ask for people to help. And as a community, we all come together and pay for animals that are hurt, that need to go to the vet. And it would just be, it would, Hayward not taking care of business and paying their own bills, it would only fall upon us again to cover that, and that's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenny Comstock.
Good? Okay. Good evening. I apologize, I'm getting over a little bit of a cold, and my printer didn't work, so I have to read it off my phone. So I'll do my best to see what I wrote here. So, good evening, Mayor Salinas, council members, and city manager. My name is Jenny Comstock. I am, in addition to a Hayward resident, I serve as the Animal Services Administrator. I've dedicated the last 25 years to animal services, during which time I've witnessed significant change, and we've overcome many challenges, thanks to our devoted staff, volunteers, and strong community support. However, my concern for the future of our animal services is now greater than ever before. I fully acknowledge the serious fiscal challenges the city faces, the critical budget deficit, and the tremendously difficult decisions required to address it. I don't envy the position you all are in. Two weeks ago, you approved activities aimed at reducing the budget deficit, including the elimination of temporary employees. And while nothing specific was said about animal services, please recognize that 47% of animal services' current workforce are temporary per diem employees. The loss of these essential team members will be crippling. The information regarding the elimination of temporary employees has been ambiguous, sometimes described as the end of temporary assignments, sometimes the end of most temporary assignments, and sometimes the end of some temporary assignments. The lack of clarity regarding how many employees, who they are, or in which departments are affected, has only compounded the fear and uncertainty among our staff, our volunteers, and our community. Animal Services employees are essential workers. While other non-essential city departments were closed last week and will be closed for two weeks during the upcoming Christmas holiday, animal services staff were and will be working. They work weekends, holidays, and they put their own lives at risk during COVID-19, showing up every day to ensure humane care for the animals and essential services for the community. This included our per diem temporary employees. We are critically, we are already operating critically short-staffed and are constantly trying to do more with less. Furthermore, while the cost for supplies and services have risen significantly, our budget has remained stagnant. Year after year, we are given a no-growth budget. Thanks to generous community donations, we are able to ensure the animals in our care receive necessary veterinary treatment to make them adoptable, along with the supplies needed to keep them healthy and mentally enriched. I've been told year after year not to ask for any more staff unless I can find the money in my budget. I have given positions to get other positions. I have no more to give. I stand before you not to point blame, but to speak of the consequences the elimination of our temporary per diem employees within our Animal Services Division will have on public safety and animal welfare, and I see that I'm out of time. So just to cap it, we would be looking at reducing service hours, increasing euthanasia because we will have nobody to care for those animals. We will reduce or reverse a decade of progress that we have made, which includes reducing our dog and cat intake by 45% over the last 10 years, and decreasing our euthanasia of cat and dogs over 55% in the last 10 years. There won't be-
Ms. Comstock?
Yes.
I'll, I'll give you a chance to close the point, but yes.
Yeah. Public safety is at risk, no animal control officer, we have temp employees helping with field coverage, the loss of our TNR program, which we've done almost 1,000 cats this year, the loss of our kitten foster program, and essentially, this is not a cost-saving loss, it's, it's a reverse in all the progress we've done. So my ask is, please let us retain our essential service employees and hire ACOs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I gave, I gave Ms. Comstock, you know, a few moments passed because, well, you know, she's the leader of our animals here in our city, so thank you. Let's see, it's Michelle, is it Kindom? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's on? Okay. Okay. It's backwards. Good evening. First, I would like to say I appreciate your comments at the beginning to let us know the current status of things. So what I'm going to talk about today, I should preface, I was under the understanding that there will be cuts to animal services, and I wanted to speak to that. I am a proud City of Hayward resident and also a volunteer at the animal shelter. I am here tonight to ask you to please reconsider or please stay with your decision not to do any cuts to the animal shelter. I know sometimes it may seem the easiest to kind of just do something blanket when you're trying to budget something like this and just say, no more per diem employees. But we do need to think about this more strategically for the shelter as well as the residents for the city of Hayward. The shelter relies very heavily on per diem employees to make sure that the animals are properly cared for, as well as relying on volunteers. Cutting per diem employees at the shelter will also mean cutting short lives of happy, healthy, adoptable animals because they will not have the staff that is needed to care for the animals. And that's terrible for the animals, of course, but it's also terrible for the employees and the volunteers as well. If you cut the per diem employees, you may also indirectly be cutting out volunteers. Many volunteers, many current volunteers, as well as future volunteers, will not want to volunteer at a shelter that may have to euthanize animals for space, which the city of Hayward has not had to do, I understand, for 15 years. And that is a really commendable thing. I don't think that that is anywhere, anything that we want to step back and go backwards on. We want to go forward and let our city be held up as an example. We want to go forward and let our city be held up as an example. The animal shelter is something that the City of Hayward should be proud of and should protect, not make cuts to. So thank you for not making cuts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Sullivan. Barbara Sullivan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, City Manager. It's encouraging tonight to hear that you have no final decisions and this is, you're taking due consideration on this matter. I'm a 50-plus-year resident of Hayward and a 30-plus-year volunteer at the shelter before it was, when it was half the size that it is now and many other things. I did want to point out that per diem positions are a bargain to the city budget. You get so much bang for your buck with them. They work unusual hours. The work is challenging, certainly emotionally difficult sometimes, dirty, hard work. Their contribution should not be regarded with a cavalier or dismissive manner. They don't accrue benefits and many other things which make some excellent savings to the city. This in contrast to, I believe now the city has many multiple assistant deputy positions and of the sort, many at the higher levels, which to my knowledge, weren't needed in the city before and I wonder why they're needed now. Are they new positions? Have job descriptions changed? Why are they needed now? Certainly, if I saw a market improvement in how the city was serving the community, that might substantiate these. But why are there duplicates presumably of someone already and currently doing a position? Why do people doing the same job? It's alarming that this appears possibly to be a trend and that's concerning. Things have gotten a little more top-heavy staffing-wise over the years. Are the city residents seeing the benefit? Are their lives better? These positions are well-paid and come with benefits and pensions and things that go into retirement. And so they're, you know, lucrative and highly desirable in that way. Could you eliminate even one of those and possibly that would, you know, cover per diem staff positions in the shelter? So please think creatively. Look outward on who are you serving instead of so much inward with these, what appear to be redundant and duplicate positions. Or think more strategically on how you're doing that. I thank you very much and the city residents, thank you.
Thank you. Carlin Stars?
I think this is still on.
Yeah.
Great. Hi, my name's Carlin. I have been a Hayward resident for 11 years and a volunteer at the shelter for three years. My first time speaking here. So the Hayward Animal Shelter provides a wealth of services to the Hayward community. They're a small, scrappy bunch of dedicated staff and volunteers. And they're people who care deeply not just about animals, but their neighbors too. Mayor Salinas, in your email response to me last week, you mentioned that not every community has its own municipal shelter. And I believe you also insisted that the shelter was not under threat of being closed, so that's good. But it was a little bit the implication of your email. And I just wanted to say regardless of how other cities might do it, Hayward does have a municipal shelter. It's a couple blocks away. And if you want to go there, you would see just how much they do with so little. And you would be very seriously reconsider taking away any per diem staff, which is 50% of their workforce, when the work they do is so critical. And especially, as Barbara mentioned, when they're already saving the city a good amount of money by being part-time and not getting benefits or holiday pay. So I wanted to invite you, Mayor Salinas, the whole City Council, any of the city staff and everyone who hasn't already to come visit the shelter. You will quickly be able to see the impact of any such decisions. And even better, you guys should come volunteer. You could pick up a poop scoop, come help clean some kennels first thing in the morning. You can do it on a weekday, on a weekend. You can even do it on Christmas Day. And then you can say you literally helped clean up your own mess.
Thank you. And Ms. Stars, you didn't do bad. That was a good first time. That was a first time. Good first time. Let's see. Next is Helen Botello. Did I say that right? Helen Botello?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Helen Botello and I have lived in Hayward for over 40 years. I am a volunteer at the Hayward Animal Shelter and I am concerned what eliminating our per diem staff means to the community, to the animals and to those who work tirelessly for the continued success of the shelter. The shelter is already understaffed. To cut 47% of our staff, the shelter will simply not be sustainable. There are many tasks that need the specialized training and the knowledge of our per diem staff. The per diems you are eliminating provide specialized care and behavior, spay and neuter programs, fostering programs, social media presence and behavioral assessments of animals going onto the street. Our community does not want to see the safety of our city compromised by letting go of essential per diem staff. As the cuts of our per diems are considered, please look at the safety of the community of being utmost importance. And then you must look at what your cuts would do to the living, breathing animals that have no voice and will become simply a statistic. We have many volunteers who have put in approximately 10,000 hours this year. The volunteers refused to be a part of a kill shelter. We have not had to euthanize animals for space for 15 years. Without per diem staff who handle the majority of daily animal care, the shelter would be forced to euthanize. No one works or volunteers at the shelter to see healthy, adoptable animals euthanized because the city cannot provide the resources that the shelter need and the community deserves. The volunteers at the Hayward Shelter cannot and will not support the euthanization of healthy, adoptable animals and unfortunately, you will lose these resources. We are very passionate about what we do and this passion does not warrant killing animals because of staffing needs. We are discussing a 47% workforce cut for the shelter. Ask yourself how many other entities in the city can take a 47% cut of employees and provide the community with the service and the safety they deserve. We ask that you reconsider the option of eliminating per diems at the Hayward Shelter as they are an essential for the operation and the success of the shelter. We have entrusted you to represent our city and we hope that you are hearing our concerns. This will have devastating consequences for the City of Hayward. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak on this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlene Chapel? Chapel? Oh, Chappelle. Is it, is it, did I say it wrong or?
Let's see. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and City Manager. My name is Charlene Chapel. I have lived in Hayward for 46 years and a homeowner for 42 years. I'm also a volunteer at the Hayward Animal Shelter. I work with Helen Botello to post the pups and dogs on Nextdoor, Facebook and Facebook groups to help them get adopted or long-term foster to adoption. I also go to the shelter on Saturdays to greet visitors and assist with questions about the pups and dogs. I'm asking you to listen to everyone and the community, again, now, this was before, reconsider, how about consider or not consider the elimination of per diems on call at the Hayward Animal Shelter. We work tirelessly to find forever homes for all the pups and dogs. Some have been there for almost six months or longer. If you read Nextdoor or Facebook, I'm sure you guys would remember Archie. Archie was a big brown shepherd and he was there for six months. Carlin took him for a field trip at five and a half months. I blasted him everywhere and he is living his best life in Half Moon Bay. Another one was Arlo. I don't know if you guys remember him. He was, they were calling him Scooby-Doo. And he was adopted after almost six months. And, and he lives up the hill from me, so I get to see Arlo. So we live by our successes and the only other thing I was going to say is there's an expression, "If you don't stand for something, you will fall for anything." I choose to stand up for the animals at the shelter with no voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Chapel, your social media game is on point, just for the record.
Helen, this is the volunteer story here.
Yes.
I just tried to do that and we also have a few per diems. And also last one, Instagram, we had addictions as part of subject titles. It really, it really is validating someone responding to that post.
I just had to say that to enter it into the record. Thank you. Is it Arisia Johnson? Arisia Johnson?
Arisia. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Arisia. I'm here as a resident of Hayward, a very proud homeowner in Hayward, the owner of two beautiful dogs, one of whom was adopted from the Hayward Animal Shelter. And of course, as you can tell from my shirt, a volunteer of the Hayward Animal Shelter. And I came up here to ask you to rethink eliminating per diem employees throughout the city, but specifically at the Hayward Animal Shelter. As you've heard from all of my fellow volunteers and advocates here, those per diem employees really fill critical gaps in staffing that are a result of decades of under-allocation of full-time positions at the Hayward Animal Shelter. Eliminating those per diem employees will result in a catastrophic loss of services, including a loss of the trap and neuter program, which reduces the number of stray cats on our streets. It will result in the loss of per diem employees who are supporting our one animal control officer, one of, there should be three. It'll result in delayed response time for sick, injured and dead animals on our streets, which will create potential for disease, potential for injured animals to be out there being a threat to safety of residents and their pets. And of course, as you've heard, the loss of per diem employees and helping care for the animals might result in animals being brought to the shelter being at risk of euthanasia simply because they don't have the staff to care for those animals. The estimate that I saw for what the city will save by eliminating per diem employees is only $1 million. That's less than 4% of the $26.5 million deficit. So I'm up here to ask you, please, don't punish our animals, don't punish our residents and don't punish the community for just less than 4% savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, is it Zelma Nunez Borja?
Zelma Nunez Borja.
Ah, Borja.
Is this ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, my name is Zelma Nunez Borja. Thank you for listening to us. I, most of the stuff is being said already. But I chose Hayward to be my city because of all the plurality, but mostly because of the shelter. My message is going to be short. Please ponder it in your hearts. Please keep it present. It has been suggested that other cities do not have an animal shelter. Is Hayward going to lower its standard and become like cities that lack humane animal services? Is that a goal? I'm sure it's not. We take pride in calling Hayward "The Heart of Debate." Heart. Our shelter is a living part of that heart and handicapping the core, the heart. The essential functions of the animal shelter will deeply harm not only Hayward's reputation, but living, feeling beings, not only pets. I just remember seeing when a deer was killed by one of our people in Hayward in the traffic accident, how the shelter truck was there to pick it up. It's not always for pets. It's a lot, a lot more. Without enough personnel, this service so humanly provide, I know that, I've been a volunteer for more than 10 years. I know how we all feel for those animals. When one of those animals is stray and they have to kill it, we all suffer. We all have created contact with them. We all know their little ways of being and it's really sad. Can you imagine if there is not enough help and they have to kill more? I wouldn't be able to stand it. I just couldn't. I'm going to leave you with a quote from Mahatma Gandhi. "The greatest, the greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." Please apply that to our Hayward. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tracy Young?
Good evening. While you've been hearing from volunteers and citizens of Hayward coming up to bat for the per diems, I am here as one of the per diems that work for the shelter. I have been with the city for 22 years. I'm here to express the concerns regarding the release of our city per diems or temp ways as we have been called. I think it's important for everyone to understand that our employee classification does not define who we are as employees or the significance that our role plays for the departments that we work for. I understand that per diems are defined as people hired on an as-needed or a temporary staffing need. But for essential services and departments that are continually short-staffed, we are not just as-needed employees. We are employees that are always needed. Many of us have been with our departments for well over 20 years. And that doesn't just go for animal services. Our friends over in Dispatch as well. They have people there that have been there for 30 years. We report weekly and we have been for years providing services that are essential not only to our department, but also to our community. Not only do we fulfill the title that we are assigned, but we also fulfill other positions within the shelter as well. Many of us are multifaceted. So not only are you getting one person to fulfill four different positions, you're getting some of your most qualified and getting some of your most qualified and experienced employees that offer their expertise to the city. It would actually cost the city more to get rid of some of your per diems, because you're going to be paying your full-time staff, and in some cases, your supervisors, to work overtime to fulfill the duties that we as per diems fulfill. Just to put into some perspective, you have one per diem who has their assigned role as a police records clerk. That particular per diem, on a daily basis, performs duties as an animal care attendant, performing behavior evaluations. They perform animal control duties. They are fully trained and qualified as an officer, as Councilmember Goldstein saw me in uniform last week when he visited. My title is a records clerk. I am a fully trained and qualified animal control officer. Not only am I, but we also have another per diem animal care attendant who is also a trained and qualified animal control officer, to help our one and only full-time member. I know that a lot of other people have spoke and have mentioned our TNR program. We have no other services to offer our community within the city. If that gets taken away, it's going to be a whole lot of members coming, community members contacting City Council, asking why we have no services for the stray cat population that is plaguing our city. Our social media presence is completely ran by our per diems. Some of your most experienced and knowledgeable employees are your per diems. We have been there the longest, we have provided services that are essential to our community. We train the full-timers. We are the ones that teach the full-time staff how to do their job. Our director has spent the past two years working tirelessly to get our shelter to where we are today, providing the services that we're able to provide, and the quality of care that we are able to provide for our animals. And she's been able to do that because of the per diems who are able to step in and step up when our full-time staff are not able to, because there's just not enough of them. So I ask you to look deeper into the per diems, and not just look at us as a line item on a budget report that's so easily stricken off. Please make sure that when making those decisions of who is to be let go, where those cuts are to be made, that you look at what is it that these per diems actually do and provide for the city and the departments that they work for. Thank you for letting me speak.[785.51][785.51](applause)
Desiree Tambora.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Desiree Tambora. While I am a newer resident of Hayward, I have had ties to the city my entire life, as my father was and still is a small business owner operating in Hayward since before I was born. I am here to speak in support of keeping the animal shelter operable. Upon moving back to Hayward, I wanted to get a feel for the community and began volunteering at the animal shelter and food pantry. I have seen and experienced the value of having amenities such as the animal shelter, two BART stations, a college, and an executive airport. And I have also seen and experienced the effects of understaffing at one of those city municipalities. The city's budget only allows for 14 full-time positions at the animal shelter, which is neither filled nor will be enough if it were filled. At present, the shelter is without two full-time animal control officers and two full-time animal care attendants. The current nine per diem staff members are tirelessly filling in the gaps where coverage is desperately needed. The animal shelter operates seven days a week and will be unable to do so if any of the current staff are let go to minimize the deficit. Keeping the shelter operable is what keeps people like you, me, and everyone in between safe. Without the current per diem and without filling the four vacant postings, vacancy postings, public safety is at risk. If the shelter's budget is cut, our community faces the risk of adopting dangerous animals, delayed response time to calls for animal control service, and a diversion of police patrol force from their essential duties to respond to high-priority animal control calls, all due to not having adequate staffing to cover and perform these important duties. Not only does that put the community members at risk, but it is also high-risk for our city employees. The staff and people of this community deserve more than a modicum of safety, protection, and peace of mind. That means the shelter is an essential service to the city of Hayward and its constituents. And the staff should be considered essential as well. Even if the city does not deem the shelter as an essential service, I think many would agree that having the privilege of all these amenities within our city limits is essential to Hayward's charm and appeal. Therefore, I strongly urge Council to look at other options that do not involve cutting staff at Hayward Animal Services Bureau. Thank you for your time and for considering my comments and perspective on the city budget cuts.
Thank you.[959.06][959.06](applause) Our next speaker is, is it Jennaly Duval? And then the next speaker will be Kathy, is it Dunn? Kathy Dunn?
Mm-hmm.
Anyways, go ahead.
My name is Jennaly Duval, and I'm with the TNR program, which is ran by a per diem employee. This program gives me an opportunity to not only give back to the community, but to instill acts of service in my 20-month-old son. I've been in this program since I was five months pregnant with him transporting cats from the clinic on Friday evenings from Richmond. I did that run proudly until my scheduled C-section. His first transport with me was at five weeks old on a Tuesday morning to Redwood City with six cats in our minivan. Since then, my son and I proudly transport at least three times a month to either Pinole, Redwood City, or Pleasanton in this program. We have also TNR'd 18 of our own neighborhood cats since he was eight weeks old, and he's learning now the responsibility we have in taking care of the strays by helping with traps set up and looking out the window to alert me if the cat is in the trap, by letting me know, "cat, cat." He's developing into a responsible and helpful little human for our community, and I don't know of any other volunteer program I can do in this city with him by my side and on our time. I ask that we don't remove this program when it provides a priceless opportunity for my family to learn the value of community service and compassion to animals. Now, as for the Hayward Animal Shelter, I'd like you to hear what I have to say and seriously take it into consideration when you do discuss possible cuts. I have volunteered with San Jose Animal Shelter before I moved to Hayward. I have seen the difference in morale between both shelters. Hayward Animal Shelter doesn't show their hardships to the public and welcomes everyone who comes through that door with a smile on their face. San Jose did not. And they both experienced short staff and budget cuts. I have also witnessed kindness and compassion to anyone who lacks knowledge concerning animal care at the Hayward Animal Shelter. I'm afraid that possible budget cuts is going to remove this warm, welcoming atmosphere to our community and will also impact the animal welfare. KTVU News did a story on San Jose Shelter a few months ago as to how adoptions decreased and animal well-being declined due to the state of the shelter, due to lack of personnel and funds. And I hope that our shelter in Hayward doesn't face a similar scenario like San Jose. Thank you, have a good night.
Kathy Dunn? And then next will be Renee Fisher.
I'm Kathy Dunn, and hello to everyone here, and I'm really happy for this chance to do this. I'm a resident of Hayward since 1972, and I've been a shelter volunteer since 2016. I'm here to explain our TNR program. We've heard a lot about it. Maybe I can fill in some gaps here. TNR stands for Trap, Neuter, Neuter or Spay, and Return in relation to community cats which are unowned, semi-owned, outdoor cats, and may be feral or friendly. Volunteers trap the cats, which are then transported to the spay-neuter clinic, where they are sterilized, given vaccines for rabies and other infectious diseases, flea meds, and microchips. If there is a medical issue, it is addressed. Each cat receives an ear chip, which helps to identify which cats have received this care. After a recovery period, the cat is returned to the area where it was trapped. Weekly appointments for the TNR program started in Hayward in May of 2017. Over the years, we expanded our partnership with high-volume, low-cost spay-neuter clinics, and were able to increase the number of appointments we could offer to the residents of the city of Hayward. For the years 2022 through 2024, we spayed and neutered between 750 and 800 cats per year. This year, we're on a projected number of 1,000. Oh my God, I can't do that. Sorry, got lost. For most years, 55% to 60% of the cats fixed have been females. Some, of course, are kittens. Our program is only offered to trappers who are trapping cats within the city of Hayward. In 2020, when COVID hit, we paused our program for six weeks, but were able to resume it due to the fact that all of our coordination and work is done outside, so we can safely continue operating this lifesaving program, especially during the springtime, a critical time when cats are getting pregnant. The coordinator has to be at the shelter at 6:15 to receive the trappers and to get our volunteer drivers on the road at 7:00 AM. Then the coordinator returns in the evening at 6:00, when our volunteer drivers return the cats to the shelter. Due to the unusual hours that a person coordinating the TNR program has to be at the shelter, it is more feasible for a part-time person to do this work. We receive no funds from the City of Hayward General Operating Fund. Funding is a constant challenge. Over the years, we have secured some grants. Other than that, the trapper pays a fee, which is 50% of the amount that the clinics charge us. Our shelter donation account pays the balance. In summary, we provide a service which benefits the residents, the cats, and the city, and the only thing we're asking is that we be allowed to continue to do so. Thank you.
And then after Ms. Fisher, it is Haley Rappa?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Salinas, I'd like to thank you very much for your opening statements, updating us on the status of your budget, and the recent emails that you have sent out to everyone, so we've had an opportunity to kind of read things from the other side. I'd just like to know how many of you have worked at the Hayward Animal Shelter? Not just a visit, but enough time to see all the challenges that they have to face every single day. The Hayward Animal Shelter provides an extremely necessary service to the community. With the possible cuts the city is proposing, it will pretty much cut the services to the shelter to the bone. There has to be a way to find the resources needed to run the shelter. They are already operating on a shooting budget, and is really, and should have more staffing than what it has, not less. Do you really and truly understand the impact of what these cuts will do? I had an opportunity to take a look at the city budget and the salaries, so that I would have an idea of the money that you have in your budget for the city of Hayward. It's not too late to reconsider and help the Hayward Animal Shelter continue to do its fantastic job that they are doing. The animals desperately need your help, and the employees as well. What would they do without you? Thank you.
Thank you.[1479.01][1479.01](applause) And then Haley? And then next is Brandon Sprogg?
My name is Haley Rappa, and my mother is Heather Rappa. She is and has been the Hayward Animal Shelter supervisor. Despite your earlier reassurance, I will still bring up this matter, especially looking back at Mr. Salinas' response to my email, and I quote, "We are, however, working through a very serious budget situation, and because of that, departments will have to make adjustments, though I wonder just how many more adjustments the shelter can have. My family has been lifelong residents of Hayward and all committed to the animal shelter, as workers and as volunteers. Ever since I was a kid, I've gone to the animal shelter, creating another community with adults I've looked up to and admired. To hear that some of these very adults, whether right now or later, will be let go due to the issues of all of the council, will be very disappointing and heartbreaking. Not to mention how the animal shelter has ensured that families in our community of Hayward have grown with these pets that they bring in and care for, some of which I've also taken care of myself. Multiple city staff have adopted from our local shelter, and it wouldn't have been possible without our animal shelter staff members. With the release of animal shelter staff, we'll include more euthanasia due to the fact that they will be understaffed and cannot provide the resources it takes to care for the animals that are brought in. I will be voting for this upcoming election, and I will not forget the actions of this council, whether in this meeting or the next. Thank you for your time. Thank you to Ms. Jenny, both Ms. Tracy's, Ms. Jacqueline, Ms. Miriam, Ms. Veronica, and other staff for the second family you've given me, and especially my mom, and for my fellow peers for coming tonight."
And then after Brandon Sprogg is Heather Rappa?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brandon Sprague. I was born and raised in Hayward. I now live in Oakland with my 16-year-old son, but Hayward is still a second home. My stepmom lives here, we visit often, and we all are beneficiaries of the Hayward Animal Shelter. I am urging you not to eliminate the per diem staff positions. Without them, the shelter simply cannot function at the level this community deserves. I want to share a cautionary tale. Earlier this year, the city of Oakland, where I live, cut eight positions at the Oakland Animal Shelter, a shelter that was already understaffed. The immediate result, the results were severe. They had to close two days a week. The Oakland City Council removed the shelter's mandate to take all animals, regardless of their age and condition. Intake plummeted, and the overall quality of care declined, despite the best efforts of the staff and volunteers. It created a negative multiplier effect that the city is still struggling with. Please don't let Hayward follow that path. The Hayward Animal Shelter is an exporter of good in the Bay Area, a model of what a well-run compassionate facility can be. The staff know the animals, they care about them deeply, and they help match them with families who will love them. My own family is proof of this. A little over a year ago, after my stepmom lost her dog, my son insisted we bring her to here, to the shelter, to adopt a new companion. There was really only one choice, Molly, a very well-cared-for black tabby. The staff, shout out to Jocelyn, knew Molly well, knew her personality, and were excited to tell us all about her. Molly has meant the world to my stepmother ever since. Just recently, with the help of Aiden, one of your outstanding animal care attendants, my son and I adopted a three-year-old kitten of our own, named TBD. Experiences like this don't happen without dedicated staffing. I also want to highlight a positive multiplier effect that doesn't show up on spreadsheets. As out-of-towners, we visited the shelter over several Saturdays, and we always made a day out of it. Lunch at Eric's Deli, stops at Books at B, the Friends of the Library bookstore in Safeway. The shelter brings people into Hayward. When something works this well, it supports more than just animals, it supports local businesses and the community's reputation. They say, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." I'll go a step further, this shelter isn't broken, please don't break it. Thank you so much.[1775.51][1775.51](applause)
And then after Ms. Rappa, we have Julie, is it?
Corillo?
Yeah, there you go.[1791.13][1791.13](laughing)
Hi, my name is Heather Rappa. I'm the shelter operations supervisor for animal services. As a lifelong resident of Hayward and an employee of animal services for nearly 12 years... As a lifelong resident of Hayward and an employee of Animal Services for nearly 20 years, my commitment to the city and its animals is deep and ongoing. That is why I'm truly and profoundly disappointed by the actions to eliminate essential per diem positions. Since the start of my career, per diem staff has been the fundamental foundation that keeps our shelter operational. While most city workers are off on weekends and spending holidays with family, I, along with the rest of Animal Services, including our per diem staff, are working tirelessly to ensure the shelter continues to run that critical service and provided. The elimination of our per diem positions is not a budgetary adjustment, it is an organizational collapse. Without them, essential life-saving programs such as our successful TNR program, our critical foster program, and basic human care for our animals will simply end. When I started at the shelter, we had eight full-time animal care attendant positions, and the per diem staff were still an essential asset. Today, due to budget deficits and positions being eliminated over the years, we are struggling with five full-time animal care attendants, and per diems are more needed now than ever. Eliminating these positions will cause the community to suffer greatly. You will have to answer to residents as to why Animal Services is no longer handling calls in a timely manner, why we are now euthanizing more animals than ever, and why critical services have ceased. Our shelter has worked extremely hard over the last two decades to reach a point where animals are not euthanized for space or time. This short-sighted decision will set the shelter back decades and destroy our reputation as a humane and progressive organization. You are going to make it impossible to keep staff at Animal Services when morale is destroyed and animals are suffering based on actions. The city has spent thousands of dollars training this staff to be the best of the best. Are you truly prepared to let that investment walk out the door and be used by another facility or another city? This decision might save money in short term, but is it worth lives lost, employees unhappy, and a community suffering because of it? I urge you to reconsider letting go of any of our temporary positions.
And then next is Carlos Corral and Yolanda.
I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said. I'm here for some accountability from you guys. You gave yourself a 58% raise, I will adjust it from what someone else said. You snuck it through in like, I guess you were updating your handbook, which the salaries are in the handbook, that's valid, but it certainly wasn't publicized, because a 58% raise deserves to be criticized, and so you denied everybody that by hiding it. I'll just jump to my thesis. Before I do, I want to say it's a little bit disingenuous of the mayor, Mark, I'm talking to you.
Yeah, I know.
Mayor Salinas.
I'm writing your comment.
When you start the meeting saying, "Oh, we never said we were going to cut the shelter things, we didn't do that," it is a line item. You specifically didn't say the shelter, but the line item to cut the part-time employees is right there on the proposed budget. So don't act like we can't read. The purpose of gaslighting is to make it seem like we're crazy for assuming something that's not there. It is there. So I just want to get that out. I don't appreciate the gaslighting. But my thesis here is, you guys don't deserve to personally enrich yourselves when you failed to do the oversight that is your job. And I read this article, and I saw you guys saying, "Oh, just passing the buck. We were lied to for two years." You weren't lied to for two years, it's your job to verify that the information you're getting is correct, especially when there is flush, when money is flush. I come from the school district, I know how this goes, I worked in the business department. It's unconscionable what happened, and it is your job, and you guys just passed the buck. They lied to us. I'm not using my notes, but anyway, I feel you should give your raise back, that's my ask. You're asking all that everybody else to give back. You even approved the executives to cut their pay by 4%. You approved that because you approve budget things, that's what you do. So I'm asking all of you, return your raise, starting all the way back to November 2023, and it may be unreasonable, but that is my ask, and that is what I'm here to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carlos Corral and Yolanda.
Okay. Everybody that's spoken, that said what I feel, and you guys, everybody here from the council, you've been very fortunate. You have such a passionate, dedicated people that want to do good for the city, and you have to be transparent.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to stop you there, because you're not at the mic, but yes, we heard you. Thank you. Next is Kat Olson.
My name is Kat Olson, and I'm here tonight, joined by Jenny Guzman. I am the current per diem clerk hired to meet the federally mandated crime reporting requirement for NIBRs, the program at Hayward Police Department. Beginning in January 2021, the FBI's National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRs, became the national standard for the law enforcement crime data reporting in the United States. The transition to NIBRs represented a significant improvement in how reported crime is measured, recorded by the federal government. NIBRs creates high-quality, accurate data that is used for tactical and strategic analysis at the local, state, and national level. I work three full days a week. If I am removed, that time will have to be filled by another clerk or clerks, whom will have to be taken from her assigned work currently within the records department, to complete NIBRs work, meeting a monthly deadline. This will require training and will no doubt incur overtime hours. So you will be removing a certified, seasoned per diem clerk who knows and does the work at straight time, and paying time and half to other clerks who have no experience with the specifics of the highly detailed work. Because this is a budget issue, that does not make sense. Taking per diem jobs will only handicap the efficiency of the department by removing critical positions, doing important work which serves the city at large, and adds to the service and safety of all the citizens of Hayward and beyond. Just because a position is a per diem position, make no mistake in the value represented by what we do. Another of our current per diem positions is the Investigations Assistant Clerk. Her work is to manage past and present mandatory retention cases that by law must be preserved permanently. She is tasked to organize and categorize these cases and aid investigators by making this critical crime data easily accessible, the value of which directly impacts their ability to solve crime. So in closing, I would request that you take a deeper and more complete look at just what would be accomplished by ending these positions, causing the city to become out of compliance with federal and state reporting requirements, which puts us at risk potentially jeopardizing future funding, as well as the inevitability suffering of department accountability, costing more in the long run to have full-time benefited staff step into these positions and try to manage unfamiliar language and processes now extremely productive. Therefore, I'm sorry, and of course, bringing hardship to the innocent individuals who had nothing to do with the problems at hand. For the record, I consider myself privileged to be a part of Hayward Police Department. I find it an honorable group of committed individuals who serve this city, giving their very best in a diverse set of ever-changing, dangerous circumstances. It is often a thankless, faceless job, but in my opinion, each and every person is a serving hero. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Rickert?
Excuse me. I'm also one of the volunteers at the Hayward Animal Shelter, and as you can tell, we're a pretty lively bunch. We're very committed, we are very passionate, but we're also a little frustrated and angry about, about basically some confusion that was actually caused by you when you came out and said you were going to take a million dollars of per diem money away. And what you didn't, sorry, and what you did in that case is you missed two really important bits of information. Number one, you didn't tell us what the total per diem number was. So people are going out there thinking, "Is this 100%? 100%? Who knows?" And the second thing is, is that not all per diem is graded the same. In terms of the Hayward Animal Shelter, Hayward Animal Shelter has a mandate, excuse me, I'm just going to slow down here, I'm getting in front of my emotion here. The Hayward Animal Shelter has a mandate for public safety and animal care, and that is 24 by 7, seven days a week, no holidays off. And what that does, that makes Hayward Animal Shelter essential. Okay? It is an essential service, and the per diem people who work there are also essential. Now, you've heard a lot of people tell you about, you know, all the, you know, all the things that they do, and it's true, okay? They are an amazing group, and their heart is in it. And I think what people really are looking for here is not magic bullets or anything like that, but I think what they're really looking for is something that is fair and equitable. Okay? And you have a long road ahead of you. Okay? It's not going to be easy, I wish you the best.
Thank you. Anna May? Is she, is she still here? No? No. Edith? There you go.
My name is Edith. So I just found out about this tonight, and so I didn't really prepare anything, but I, you know, based on your opening statement, I am more hopeful that you won't be touching anything that has to do with the animal shelter, Hayward's animal shelter, and that includes their per diem staff. So I hope and pray that you are, you know, good with your word with that. Maybe there's other ways, maybe we can vote other ways to bring about the budget deficit. But I do want to say that I lived in LA for a very long time, Berkeley, Oakland, as well as Union City. I am an animal rescuer. I have worked with all of them, and by far, Hayward Animal Shelter has been the best. I mean, with LA being the worst, even though I was born there, but it's the worst. But Hayward Animal Shelter is amazing. Every time I call them, when I take a sick animal, a found, lost animal, they're very helpful, amazing, but I do see that they are understaffed, and so, and so cutting the per diem staff would be even, you know, worse for the city of Hayward, in my opinion, and everyone else's opinion here. Tri-City Animal Shelter in 2020 actually eliminated their TNR services, and they are having a huge crisis with the cats out there. I mean, they are multiplying daily, I mean, it's insane. I have all my, most of my friends still live there, and, you know, it's sad, the way that things are being mishandled over there, and it's been five years, and I know that the Fremont, Union City, and so forth have asked them to bring the TNR program back, to stop the budget cuts for their animal shelter, and it's just chaotic over there. And so when I heard about this today, I said, "Oh, my God, please, God, no." I moved here to this amazing city and have loved it so far. I hope to stay here my whole life and raise my two little ones here forever, so I just want to, you know, commend you all here, everything that you have all done, I've been very happy with, a lot of the decisions. So I just hope that you, you keep those going, and that you reconsider the, you know, not eliminating the per diem staff, and also want to commend the Hayward Animal Shelters, they're amazing, and all their staff, volunteers, and the citizens that have, you know, come forward to today and the support. So thank you all of here, and thank you all over here.
Thank you. And yes, our Animal Services staff are fantastic, so thank you for that. Next speaker is Lynn Ellen. Is it Farher?
So I really never thought I'd come and talk to you guys. I've been a resident for about better than 40 years in Hayward. When I moved into Capri Avenue in 1985, that area was inundated with cats, and I started trapping just out of the need for seeing that it needed to be done way before the shelter started to support us and have people that were willing to coordinate TNR programs with the clinics, and to have the bottle babies and the foster programs. There were other groups back in the day that we had free spay-neuter programs, and they gave vouchers, and I'm well past the 1,300 mark. I'm not telling that to impress you guys, I'm just letting you know that I haven't heard any statistics about how much one cat can create more with everybody talking about statistics. So I have something that I dug out, I've had for years, and it says here that in seven years, one unspayed cat can create more than 420,000 offspring if they, they don't all live. They live miserable lives out there, from disease and cars and mean people that put poison in food. Anyway, if the shelter's per diem staff is cut back by what I've heard, there will be less than half the amount of people there to take care of all the animals, they won't be able to run any of the programs that we have for TNR or foster. It will revert back to what it was like when I moved over to Capri Avenue in 1985. It will, we will be inundated with sickness in animals that are overrunning us, rather than we're trying to control them. I certainly hope that you can find the money in the budget to compensate for the shortage, and I'm wondering where the money went. Do we have any idea who's pilfered? I know, it's all hearsay, so I have no grounds to, you know. Anyway, I don't want to take up any more of your time. Thank you for listening, though.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have some callers online. I don't know, I'll go to the Keep Hayward Clean and Green Task Force, this might be for another item, but. Keep Hayward Clean and Green Task Force?
Oh.
Oh, that, okay. Yeah. Are you, oh, yes.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes. Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, I think my husband had this set up before. My name is Sabrina Hammond. My husband was part of the Keep Hayward Green and Clean, so his tips was set up. I just wanted, I guess you've heard it a lot, my name is Sabrina Hammond, I lived in Hayward for 20 years. My husband volunteers with the city, the city has been volunteering for a long time. And I'm sorry to keep repeating what you have heard plenty already. I also heard through social media disturbing news about- I also heard through social media disturbing news about maybe budget cuts to the animal shelter. I am not part of the volunteers of the animal shelter. However, it is, as a member of the community and what I see in our community, a dire need for more services. If you look through social media, there is an abundance of pets that get lost on a daily basis. The, the people from the community are stepping in, in many cases, to care for these animals until their owners are found. And sometimes they're not. And that's where the animal services are critical. I consider that at this moment in time, we are actually having a crisis with all these animals being lost or dumped in the streets. And hearing that potentially animal services are going to suffer due to the budget cuts, it's concerning. So I've decided to participate to please request that the definition of needed services or not needed services be thought thoroughly before any decision is taken on this regard. And that's it for me. Thank you so much for listening.
Our next caller is Debbie Frederick.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I will do my best to not take my three minutes, but I am here because of the animal shelter and the budget. And I want to start out saying, Mayor Salinas and our council members, I feel that you all and our city staff are people of integrity, working for our common best interest. And I'm sorry for some of the tenor of the emails you described. I don't need to repeat all the excellent comments. I've been in the Hayward since 1989 and I have done, I'm registered and have done the trap neuter release. I want to give a specific shout out to a leader in that program at the shelter, Hillary Drake. But I don't need to repeat the wonderful per diems volunteers, what Jeannie Comstock and Heather Rappa have described to you. Please do not cut the per diems or any other services. We need more than one animal control officer. Thank you so much for listening to all of us.
Thank you. Our next caller is Zoom user.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Luther. I'm a lifelong resident here in Hayward and I, I wanted to comment on this. Number one, I commend the shelter for not euthanizing for over 15 years. I had no idea. And I think that's just an amazing stat and you all deserve big kudos for that and I thank you. But please keep in mind that your passion, you need to keep this passion in the forefront because you will need to continue to speak up on this subject. Tonight is not the end of this. I think that you guys should bring up actual stories about what you encounter daily in the animal shelter atmosphere so that they can really understand it on a personal level. And I'm sorry I didn't get the lady's name that was in purple in the wheelchair, but I back your request and I raise it. I'm asking the council, the council members and the mayor, you know, when, when you don't do a good job, you get fired. That can't happen because you were voted in and we're going to have to wait until the next election to fire you. I know you guys aren't going to like this. But I think that you need to forfeit your pay for the next two years at least, claw back the Russell City reparations, undo the pro-Palestinian divesting, sell the movie theater, even not including the movie theater, you'll be close to a million dollars to fund the shelter annually. That's what I request. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi, I am TJ of Hayward Concerned Citizens and I wanted to comment. This is a very organized group. They mobilize on next door more than any group I've seen in a while. TNR feeding and getting care for the ferals, adoptions, that's their life's blood. It's what they do. Multiple ordinary citizens do the extraordinary work every day of keeping that shelter afloat. Volunteers and private donations and a lot of community support. Many of them are, are Hayward Concerned Citizens and being one of them, one of my, one of my own, I now am going to advocate. Mayor Salinas, you need not speak to set the tone. It's other people's turn to speak. You make it sound like this is not on the table at all, but it is. Police dispatch, the per diem person spoke on this the last meeting. If you do per diem cuts, I want to hear you promise that the shelter won't go under. But you can't promise that. You gave a foreboding statement in your general email response to many people. As of today, there's no proposal to cut funding. Hayward is one of only a few cities in Alameda County that operates a municipal animal shelter. And some cities have shifted to regional service models to reduce costs. It's important to recognize that different models exist. That was your quote. Tell us what that means because you lost a lot of our trust with this budget situation. Let's not be cryptic. If you can take from our Measure C K1 money that was approved by your taxpayers to help fix this mess, then how can you assure us that you won't touch the animal shelter team? So let me speak in a broader context. What about the things you've not told the public? How about, how much revenue did you lose from the divestment that our city leaders did a year or so ago? We had no say on that. No more HART program? But last I checked, the website was still current. Nobody knows the whole program was disbanded. Funds granted to the community agencies last year, I'm hearing word on social media that half the monies were taken back. The Russell City Redress Fund that Hayward is footing, $250,000? Is that going to be diverted to what is happening in the here and now? You may not feel that this is a very polite statement, but I say it because we will continue to hold you accountable for your actions. You may have been given bad numbers, but you took someone else's word and we elected you as our voice. So I ask that you please be transparent with your public. There, there's these speakers, they tend to all show up for no reason. We're all impacted by this budget crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last speaker is Tom Farr.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm just going to echo what some of my Hayward Concerned Citizens said just now and TJ with Hayward Concerned Citizens. We've been listening to council meetings for five years now, taking notes on everyone's comments. And this week, I realized about a year ago, I was doing a cleanup with Councilmember Cyrop. And it was after the election and Cyrop, Councilmember Cyrop asked me, how do you feel about, you know, election's done? Do you feel good? And I said, yes and no. Yes, I, I'm able to be with my family more, more time, but no, the next four years are not going to be good. So, and it just struck me because, you know, we, there's been a lot of bad decisions made over the last few years. There's been, the last budget that we balanced was actually about 600,000 taken out of the general fund. And so it's just been a spiral that I don't understand why it's still happening. Like five defunded positions from the police years ago, four years ago, frozen positions and that money was given away elsewhere. But then you also do great things like proclamations for our fellow Rotarian, Ed Phillips and his daughter speaking, speaking tonight. I appreciate her speaking. And by the way, he loves, he always loved the old fashioned donuts at Hayward Rotary. I really appreciated him and, and getting hatchetchy water for us in Hayward. So that was a great legacy he grained. But just these last minute decisions, one night decisions, divestment of city funds in one night, buying a movie theater in one night, two weeks ago, using Measure C and K1 money in one night. We got to do better. We got to do, it's leadership, but it's also listening. And people all here want to listen. They want you to listen and listen to everyone's concerns in the community. And so I'm just asking for my, I've been on, worked on ambulance 911 for 22 years for Alameda County and dispatch is important as well as the police are important, fire's important, but cutting those staff is not going to help our community members and our citizens of the city and, and especially our animal shelter. They're severely understaffed right now and it's important work that they do on a daily basis. So please do more listening and follow the leadership and listen to our fellow members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do not have any more cards. I do not have anyone else online. And so what I'd like to do is close public comment, but before I close public comment, I wanted, I did want to say thank you for, for coming tonight. Thank you for your comments. Yes, we are listening. We are entering a very complex time right now in the city. And a lot of your comments, we heard them. We will be considering them as we move forward. But I wanted to assure all of you that nothing has been done yet. Nothing has been decided yet. And so I, you know, and, and we always, you know, next, next week, we will have another council meeting. Keep advocating, keep emailing us and, and we'll, you know, and we'll take all of your emails into consideration as we move forward. But before I close public comment, I see Councilmember Andrews has her hand up.
Thank you. I was going to wait for the budget update, but I am compelled to speak now during public comment, right now. Thank you for everyone attending tonight's meeting. Last week, I visited the animal shelter to have an understanding of the impacts of the budget cuts to the department. While I was there, I watched two people surrender animals. Staff accepted them with no questions asked. We didn't ask their zip code. We didn't ask what city they lived in. We accepted the animals. This was on a day where the animal shelter was actually closed, yet the office was still open. Last month, I actually had to catch and surrender an animal. And after a behavioral assessment, it was determined I could not keep the dog. We were, we were able to find the original owner and I recognize many of the staff, including Tracy and another Tracy and Heather who are here tonight, who helped with the situation. And I just want to acknowledge their efforts. But I know you would like to see more action and not live service from staff and council. Staff has been looking at cost-saving measures and will be revisiting the budget. Mayor Protim and I, Mayor Protim Roach and I have also drafted multiple budget strategies and will be submitting to staff strategies that include selling a property, continuing to seek grants, revisiting additional cuts to our salaries. Although council does not have staff, we have heard that other cities pay more and our salaries represent .0013 of the general fund. We need to revisit our salaries as the current concerns I raise when we approved our salaries are coming to fruition. And I've also requested the council to dig deeper. Now is the time to reduce, even if it's minimal pressure on the general fund, we need to cut our salaries. We have also reached out to multiple rescues and foundations to help relieve the pressure on the animal shelter services. We have also reached out to the county to help support, as this is not just a city problem, also a regional problem, that we must continue to find regional approaches and solutions. I believe almost if not all of us have adopted a block. I've also challenged each council member to cover adoption fees for a pet to either give as a gift or at least make a contribution to the animal shelter. Donations help support reduction on supplies and equipment and help relieve pressure on the animal shelter budget. I know this will not cover the impacts of budget reductions. However, I hope this also encourages the public and mainly our businesses to support services at the animal shelter as we see in other communities. Thank you all for coming tonight and I appreciate your advocacy, especially the organizers of Santa Con and Zalbicon who support the animal shelter on an annual basis. I request for the city manager's office to work with the Hayward Police Department to revisit their budget to find a solution for the animal shelter, including reaching out to the county as many of the animal services are serviced from the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Roach.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Andrews. I was also going to wait to the budget item, but I don't know if you're all going to stick around for that because we have some other things to get through and then we're going to get to a general budget item. But I did want to thank you all for coming here. It's obviously very difficult to sit here and hear these comments. I don't think any of us, you know, when we were, you're right, I think it was Julie maybe that talked about how it was on there that we are looking at per diem employees. But that is not for the shelter. None of us, none of us have been asked, do you want to cut eight employees for the shelter? That was, that is not a question that's been asked. It's a holistic look at the entire city. How do we cut this? How do we get, you know, how do we address this deficit? And I did, if you don't mind, Chief Matthews, if you would come up, I just want to confirm with you that there has been no plan to cut the shelter per diem employees. It is being looked at. Every per diem employee has been looked at in the city. All the positions are being looked at. Because I, I just want to be clear, we're, our general fund is about 80, almost 90% right now of salaries and compensation, to the point of where did the money go? It went, everybody got pretty nice raises these last few years. And, and I agree, maybe we need to look at ours, maybe that was ill-advised, but everyone did because we were trying to get caught up to market where people were, were not paid to market because of COVID. Everyone was sort of holding on, holding and waiting. And we had this feeling if we want to attract good people to the city, that we would give everyone a raise. So if you look at our general fund, it almost got to about 90% last year, which is too high. And this is where we find ourselves and it's painful for all of us. So thank you for all your comments, but I just wanted to ask the chief, the shelter is under the purview of the police department. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And my understanding is you're looking at the whole department holistically and have you had a discussion with the shelter that, guys, brace yourselves, all eight employees are going to be gone?
No, we have not had that conversation. We are looking at every full-time and per diem position and balancing that against the need to provide essential services. And that's not just an exercise that the police department's undergoing. That's every city department is doing the exact same work. And that is a, it is a daily task at this point. We are having these conversations daily, but nobody's told that they are going to be separated from the shelter.
Thank you for saying that. I just want everyone to hear that because I know obviously the chief and Jenny have some work to do and what this is going to look at. But I think to the point of the Nyberg clerk or, you know, it sounds like there are some essential, actually like federally mandated things that we're not trying to mess with. I know I'm not and I don't think city staff is and everyone is doing the hard work to save all of the jobs we can. And that is including talking to our labor groups and, and looking for compensation. So I, I just want to assure you that we are trying to save as much essential services as possible and I absolutely include the shelter in that. So I appreciate all of your advocacy. I just wanted you to hear from the chief that this is not, there is no target on the shelter right now. It is a holistic look at the whole city and how do we do this? Given that we decided to have this value of giving all of our employees raises in the last two years. And this is where we find ourselves, reduce revenue, increase salaries, ill-advised obviously at the time, you know, you're right, we can't blame staff for the information we got, but we made those decisions. And I, I just wanted you to hear that from me, that there is no target. We will do the best we can, working with the chief, working with the head of the shelter and, and do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you. Just want to reiterate some of my colleagues' comments here and also just be very clear, there's no desire here to abdicate any kind of responsibility. The buck does stop with us. And I think, and I encourage everyone who's here tonight to revisit our last council meeting where we really go into depth over how we're trying to address this budget and how we got here in the first place. Because our interest is not to try to hide anything, but to put all of our cards on the table so you can understand why we're in the position we're in and all that we're trying to do to get out of it. Without, you know, wasting anybody's time, I just really truly want to thank all of our residents for coming out tonight, not just for writing the emails and showing up, but for the folks that have dedicated countless hours volunteering. I think it's incredibly powerful what the animal shelter's been able to do and our volunteers and our community have been a critical part of that success. I just want to express to the community and on behalf of the council, that is not lost on any of us at all. I also just want to thank our animal service workers for their dedication to making our shelter not just a great shelter, but a shining example regionally, regionally. I mean, the, the statistics that we're thrown out tonight were incredibly impressive. And I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that it's taken to get to that point. And we are weighing these comments very heavily as we try to navigate what the path forward looks like. And I just want to communicate to the community that we are in active conversation with our labor partners to try to reduce this deficit as much as possible and protect as many jobs as possible. We are all aligned on this goal, around making sure that we can protect every single employee to the best of our ability. And so, yes, this deficit does exist, but these details are still in flux, and we are working around the clock. Our staff, we had a meeting before this meeting, if you can believe it, and our staff showed up a few minutes late, because they were just wrapping up a meeting, where they were trying to put together the numbers to bring to us, because that's how frequent our conversations are, is we're trying to figure out the right approach to addressing this. So, I just want to communicate that this is not something that we're taking lightly. This is something that we're thinking about constantly, discussing constantly. And we're going to try to do our best to preserve as many jobs as possible. And I just want to communicate to all of you, on behalf of myself, everything you've said tonight is so deeply heard. And as it relates to some of the other council decisions that some folks may have deemed a bit more questionable, or have questions about, I am always available to talk about those decisions, the reasoning and the rationale behind it, and I'm sure my colleagues are too. So, I just want to, you know, if I could remove this dais right now, I would, because I want to be as available as possible. So I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for your comments, and thank our employees as well.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to close public comment, and, and just for the sake of the dais and for the team up here, I'm going to take a seven-minute break, so that we can get a drink of water. Okay, let's reconvene. And Madam City Clerk, give me the... Got it? Okay. Before I proceed, one, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting. Before I proceed, I'd like to call upon again our city attorney to give a closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. And apologies, the, the council also had a special closed session on November 12th, to convene a session with labor negotiators. There was no reportable action. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to have a city manager's comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it short. City staff will be assisting Eden Youth in hosting the second Hayward Rides Bike Giveaway, which will take place alongside the Eden Youth Toy Giveaway. During this event, Eden Youth will distribute toys to approximately 300 families. Staff will provide 115 bikes to current Hayward Rides recipients who were unable to attend the Trunk or Treat Festival, as well as newly elected, newly selected high school students. This event will be held on Saturday, December 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Eden Youth and Family Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I have a presentation. And this is the annual Beautiful Yard Contest Award presentation. And I hope, and the, the nice part of this annual presentation is I play a very, very minimal role. And I am going to turn this meeting now over to our Keep Hayward Clean and Green Commission, which is led by Chair Melissa Milliman and Vice Chair Tom Ferrera. Actually, Mayor, thank you for always helping us out with your truck. The truckloads that you provide has been instrumental. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Tom, co-chair. Yes, Melissa Milliman, Chair of Cleaning Green Commission. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor, for your support of the Cleaning Green Commission. Once Keep Hayward Clean and Green, now Cleaning Green Commission. So, and thank you for our winners for being very patient tonight. But yes, we do have, we do have this presentation, but I think, given that it's already 9:30, I think we're just going to skip that and basically say that the Beautiful Yard Contest is about, basically, our community members that keep their yards up and do a very good job of that. And that's what we're trying to recognize tonight. So, thank you for being responsible about your own front yards. Like, that is just really very cool. So, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, Chair Milliman, what I'd like for you to do is, the pictures of the yards is like the big deal. So, what I'd like to see, let's see if we can at least see the yards.
You're right, you're right, you're right. Absolutely. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because those are...
That's very important.
Those are like, you know, for us homeowners, these are goals. These are like personal goals up here.
Third place Suzanne, can you stand up?
Nice.
Yeah. Right on. Lovely. Suzanne.
Suzanne is a, a member of Hayward for 31 years, right?
No, I've lived here for 31, worked here for 20.
20, that's right.
Okay, awesome. All right. And then, oh, Ernie, yes, where, Ernie, where are you?
Over there.
Stand up. Yes, lovely yard. And then our first place winner, Alan Castillo.
Nice.
Is our first place winner here? Oh, wow, yes. Right on. Excellent, excellent. Oh, and thank you, you're so patient.
Yeah, thank you for waiting.
9:30. Okay, so that's our winners. And yes, so they are going to get their signs, and then also our members.
Yes, take a picture.
Yes, a picture with the mayor. And also, they're also going to get a gift certificate. Yeah. So, I'm going to be quiet now. Oh, yes, please.
I was just going to say, this is the third year of this Beautiful Yard Contest, and it's really wonderful to see everybody participate in all this. And people still sometimes have their signs still out today in honor, because they're so excited to get this honor. So, yeah, we've still got 1,500 adopt-a-blocks out there. If anybody wants to adopt a block, please. I know Julie Roach, I think you adopted a block.
Except that you're going to help me to actually organize the cleanup, right?
Oh, okay. And Zermaio, he has adopt-a-block, and Angela. So, yeah, it's, and, and the Cyrop family as well. Thank you.
Yes. And the cleaning, so Cleaning Green Commission, our next cleanup is February 28th, 2026. So, anybody that wants to come out and help, we always give volunteer hours to our young members of society if they need it. So, anybody, and yes, our mayor comes out with his truck. Angela Andrews, also councilmember. She shows up a lot. You all do. Like, thank you so much for supporting that, this commission. Really appreciate it.
And also, yeah, wow. Also, another thing about our cleanups, we also offer four hours of community hours cleanup for the young ones going into college. It looks good on their resume. And also, we have donuts, we have snacks, coffee. Yeah, so, and the coffee's supplied by Snappy's Caf, Snappy's Coffee. We really appreciate her. So, yeah, come on by, we'll have a great time.
Great. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to call upon Councilmember Andrews, and she and I will go down to the podium, and we will hand out certificates and, and money, and prizes, prizes.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the commissioners that are here tonight. I see more of us are here. So, wanted you all to say your names and into the mic, so people know who you are.
Yes, one of our newest members.
Yes, hello, I'm Peyton Waterman, and I am a new member this year on the Hayward Cleaning Green Commission.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening to everyone. I'm George Villamil, and I've been with the commission for a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank maintenance staff as well for supporting this initiative. It really brings community pride to our neighborhood. So, thank you. It really brings community pride to our neighborhood, so thank you.
So, let's do... let's do third place. Let's do Ms. Phyllis.
Yes.
And... And this... this is a... this is $10,000... no, $100. It's $100.
Thank you. Can you watch us take a picture with your phone? Or no, you don't want it?
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, and then stand right here in the middle, and we'll take a picture.
And then Marion will send it to you.
Yes, yeah, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
Chair. Everybody.
Yeah, just one. All right, two ready? She... okay, one more. One, two, ready?
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Our neck... our second place winner is...
Congratulations.
You wanna spend it on your yard? You wanna spend it on your yard?
Is it Ramon?
Yeah, I remember that you were very much trying to give it to the...
Second place, yes. Ramon Cisneros.
Well, I'm Ernie.
Oh, you're...
He's my guardian.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, well, here, that's yours. And then you got your... get in the middle between us. Oh, and I think, yeah. Anyways, okay. All right, no.
Get on the other side so it's balanced.
Yeah, Melissa, stand over here. And then... And then first place, ladies and gentlemen, to Alan Castillo.
Oh, she's dressing up.
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
Okay, good, good. So, who takes this? Who takes the...
I know, that's so nice.
And then why don't you hold that?
I know, she was very patient. Very patient.
George.
Oh, when you're done.
I give it to you.
Thank you.
Here the kids behind me. There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're gonna make things.
Thank you. I'll talk to you soon.
Okay. All right. Congratulations to everybody, and don't spend your gift card all at one time. Thank you. Okay. Next is our consent calendar. There have been some requests to pull items 1 through 5 by Mayor Pro Tim Roach, and then there have been multiple people who wanted to pull item 10 and item 11. And I think the city manager wanted to make a comment with item 11. But before that, let me first ask Mayor Pro Tim Roach for her comments or questions on items number 1 through 5.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to take too much time. I just wanted to ask Assistant City Manager Tom, if she would address some of these, because, you know, we're just... I just want to make sure, given the earlier discussion, that we're really being careful about what is and isn't coming out of the general fund. So, if we could just go through them, I would appreciate it. And I was gonna ask the fire chief if he wouldn't mind addressing, I think it's the fourth one, yeah, the fourth consent item. So, when we get there.
Yeah, so item 1, that item which is asking for authorization, but that is coming from the water replacement fund.
Okay, so that is not... that's not a general fund transfer, that's an enterprise... Okay, so that's not gonna affect... okay.
What was it? Item 2 is accepting money, so that one, I think, is not... Item 2 is accepting money, not spending money.
Oh, okay, you're right. Thank you for... thank you for that, okay.
Item 3, this one is... so, we do come to council whenever we have a contract that exceeds a certain amount. Often, these are contracts that we've always had. So, this is a contract we've actually had for 20 years. Our acting IT directors here, if you have any questions about it, this is for our GIS systems. It's something we have to have for many of our other systems to work. And we're looking at an increase of $2,000 annually, which is very reasonable for this type of software.
Okay, so you're saying, so $124,000 was budgeted, but we're adding $2,000 to that? So, it was already in the budget for $124,000. So, it's an additional...
It's an additional $2,000 annually.
Okay.
For that... for that item.
Okay, and is that... is that funded, that sort of like other departments feed into that fund too in order to... is that...
Yeah, so this is... this comes out of the Internal Service, and please jump in if I'm getting anything wrong, but coming out of our IT fund, and about 75% of that is general fund, and 25% of that is other funds.
And earlier, you told me that we're getting a really good deal on this. I mean, is that, like, did we already sort of try to, like, reduce that contract so that we're... I mean, are we trying to find savings in that contract? Even with the $2,000?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this item. So, the previous contract that was approved, that was a three-year deal. We saved about $50,000 over the life of that contract. So, basically, this just gets it... it's a slow ramp up to market. So, and in summary, if we went like with the yearly deal, we're looking at like a 5% to 10% annual increase, and this is just a very flat, very low percent increase.
Okay, and then are you... with this budget, do you... like, I wanted to ask the question... I was trying to ask that question earlier, but do all the departments feed into your budget in order to do this because it feeds the whole city?
Yes, so we have the ISF fund, just exactly for that purpose. So, the intent of ISF is to not only capture headcount in each department, but it also allocates it for the software costs as well. So, and for example, something like a GIS, if it's used by everybody, every department pays their portion of the GIS allocation.
And just to sort of make it really clear, what would happen if we didn't approve this contract?
Well, then your enterprise systems, like public safety, plans and permits, they would cease to work. It's a key component of what we do.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be clear what the essential need of this contract is. Thank you for answering that question. I understand better. Thank you. Yeah, do you want on this side of me?
I just want to make sure, even though GIS is a common phrase, just want to say what GIS is, just for the public.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. Geographic Information Systems. It's basically the common term used for mapping.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for answering the questions. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and then, yeah, Chief Henry, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to ask about the 250 over three years for the plan review services. If you could just speak to that and how that gets paid.
Yeah, absolutely. Basically, when a customer comes to the... to get a plan for review, they can select and request and expedite, which, when they pay the fees, that we use those fees to pay for the consultant. So, we're asking for the appropriation, the ability to pay that consultant for those services.
But it's paid for by people that come in, so the fee that people are paying to get that...
The fee covers the cost of the service being provided.
So, there's no extra allocation coming from the general fund to pay this? This is all sort of like a neutral from the fees directly from...
Yeah, it's offset by the revenue coming in.
Okay, okay, I think that's all I wanted... thank you. Thank you very much for answering that question.
Thank you. And a councilmember, Cyrop, wanted to speak to item number 10.
Well, I wanted to speak to item number 5 one more time, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you so much, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, on this one, I wanted to ask, I think our finance directors here, I just wanted to ask you about that because I had a little off-line conversation with you. I wanted to ask you about, because I think this is two... it's 100... I can't remember what the actual amount is per year, but...
Sorry about that. The amount varies based on the value of assets that are under investment at the time.
Okay, and one question I asked, and I sort of want to ask you this in public, is this is a fee that we then pay out of the general fund for someone to manage these assets, right?
It currently is invoiced, paid from the general fund, and recovered from the department's earning interest. We've been in touch with the vendor. We can modify that, so it's just directly taken from our investment earnings as well, so we'll likely take that action.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so, because I think if it... if it came directly from the management of the assets, then it wouldn't be... I mean, I know that this ends up being sort of, right, money is fungible, right? So, it... but right now, we're trying to preserve as much cash in our general fund as possible. So, if they took it out from the management of the funds, then while it may reduce our overall cut... our overall assets, it's not cash directly out of the general fund.
It's the same amount of money either way, yes. So, it would be... it wouldn't be an impact. It wouldn't come in and out of the general fund. It would just be a smaller, lesser amount of interest earnings that would be immediately offset by an invoice that we wouldn't have to pay. And we would still see the invoice as well, so we would know what those dollar costs are. So, we would still have that visible to us in terms of knowing the costs. We just wouldn't be paying, it would be coming out of our investment proceeds.
Out of the... so, are... and so are you saying that you are gonna look into doing that, having it come directly out of the...
Yeah, we'll likely proceed with that.
Okay, so then if we're approving this tonight, then so we're just approving... So, wherever it comes from, we're saying this is the percentage of that asset management that they have? Okay, okay, thank you very much. All right, Mayor, I think I'm good. I don't need to pull any of these items. I think I understand a little bit better, and I just wanted to be clear where all the money was coming from or going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to discuss item 10 a little bit. I see Director Mary's here, and we have Representative Boska as well. On this item in particular, because it will lead to a small rate increase for Hayward residents, I was curious about two things. One is, there were some Palo Alto commissioners that have written to the council around concerns. I was hoping that Boska might be able to speak to some of the high-level concerns around potential hitting costs in addition to the rate increase that they're worried about, and, you know, hopefully assure us here that that's not going to be the case. And then also, it sounds like Hayward tried to negotiate a few terms that ultimately weren't accepted, and so I'm curious what those terms were, why we weren't able to reach an agreement there. It seems like this is a plan that largely benefits other cities more than it benefits Hayward. So, I'm a little reluctant to say, yeah, let's pay a little bit more money if none of the ideas that we had as part of that negotiation are part of it. So, I'll pass it to Director Mary to begin, and then maybe you can invite Boska up to speak to some of the additional questions that I raised.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to mention that we received a memo from Palo Alto commissioners. Very detailed, good information. But really, at the end of the day, what they were discussing really had not much to do with the impact of NPQs on the cost to Hayward. The cost to Hayward is very simple. There is $4 million that these agencies, per year, right now, pay for the water that they have no use for, in some cases, they cannot use, but they have to purchase per the agreement. So, Hayward is 7% of the total number of water users. So, 7% of that cost, or about $300,000, $280,000, becomes a hit to Hayward. So, the conversation that I had with Boska over the past two years was if there was a way to alleviate that cost impact on Hayward. Unfortunately, there wasn't a way that that could be done for Hayward and not the other 25 member agencies. So, that cost eventually got distributed over everyone. The cost impact per customer is really small. It's about a few cents, I think 30 cents per customer. The total is 280. But I just want to also add that one of the beneficiaries is the city of Mountain View. The city of Mountain View has an extra ambitious program to add housing. I have downloaded the RENA housing for all counties in the Bay Area, and they have one of the most aggressive programs. In Hayward, we have a population of 160,000, and our RENA number for 2031 is 4,600 housing units. Mountain View has a population of 80,000, and their RENA number is over 11,000. And then there are other agencies like Alameda County Water District that serves Fremont, Newark, and Union City, and they have aggressive RENA numbers too. So, this $280,000 is not going to remain as high over the years, at least that's what I believe. But we start with 280. The other comments about, you know, extra projects that San Francisco might do, they have nothing to do, or very little to do, with this impact on Hayward today. San Francisco can add projects, and they can add cost to us, but that is not related to the NPQs. There are some benefits to approving this because there are some other certainties that will happen related to our cut during a drought. Hayward has a cut that is about 12% when the regional cost cut to Hayward member ag... to Boska member agencies is required to be 27%. So, we have some benefits here that will occur to us, incur to us if we approve what's before us. We fought real hard to not have this impact, but at the end of the day, that was not possible. I still recommend that.
And I'd like to invite Boska up to just provide some additional context here.
Thank you. I think that's on. Tom Smegel, I'm a general manager of Boska. Thank you for having me tonight. What I would say is the additional benefits to you are actually kind of the opposite of what's in that report that was sent out by Mr. Gupta from Palo Alto. If we're... if we're letting Mountain View conserve water, which is really what this is... what this is in part about, the extra cost to the 25 other agencies and to San Francisco, has to do with lowering the barrier for Mountain View to continue to conserve water, that is gonna relieve some of the constraints on all of us. And what that will mean over time is it is much less likely that those large, expensive projects that are referred to in that report, and that $10 or $16 million that's thrown out there, that much less likely that those will ever be contemplated to be built. And so, that's good news. That's really good news that comes out of this. It's removing that barrier. It's allowing the city of Mountain View and other... the other three agencies to have that wiggle room, so to speak, to continue to promote water conservation. I will say, some of the other things I saw in the report today that I wanted to highlight for you, simply that they're mentioning that there's an extension. There's a technical extension of our Tier 2, our old Tier 2 drought rationing split among the agencies. That was done in case this got delayed. But it doesn't... it doesn't take away the deadline that's there with San Francisco and with the other agencies. Everyone expects, and all 25 who have passed this so far, expect that this will be done at the end of this year. And of course, Hayward is the last... the last to vote on that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I will say, it was a consensus process, and it involved, I think, over 60 meetings. I think you said in the staff report, and I have Danielle McPherson here with me. She facilitated those meetings for Boska, but it's really a group effort of all of the agencies. It's sort of not my idea, and not Boska's idea, but it's the idea collectively of all of the water users together. And that has worked really well for us in representing a group against San Francisco at times when we've had to be adversarial with San Francisco. So, keeping that group together is also a very important facet of this. And so, I would encourage you to consider the positive votes of the other 25 agencies when making your decisions today.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional context. My last question here before I hand it to my colleagues is just, as staff... as staff, you know, this item came forward to the dais because the Infrastructure Committee wanted to hear, you know, more of the council's opinion on it. I was a little disappointed to see a lack of infrastructure comments in the staff report because there was some comment before this came before the full council. I guess I'm curious, from your perspective, Director Mary, is the staff recommendation to move this forward?
Absolutely, yes. No change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for being here today. And so the letter that we all saw from the two generals from Palo Alto, I just want to be clear, did the Palo Alto City Council already approve this?
Palo Alto City Council approved this 6-0, yes.
Okay, so it was unanimous.
And you have a letter from the mayor of Palo Alto that came in, I think, yesterday.
Okay.
Reiterating their support, and they supported this 6-0 despite comments from the same individuals.
From the same people, okay. And we're the last agency to do this, so everyone else has approved this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
I just wanted to thank staff for bringing this item, and I want to thank CEO Tom Smegel for his leadership on Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. Just want to make sure we're signing out those acronyms for the public. And this was a long effort to get here to this point. I would like to reiterate, we are the last city out of the 26 cities to approve this, and staff has done a great job in advocating for us. We have, I have tried to advocate for us as well, and this is the minimal impact we have to our residents. We understand that 30 cents, it sounds low, but we are very conscious of the cost of just utilities in general, but we are getting access to hetch-hetchy water, and as a collective, this is a very important agreement that we should maintain for our residents. So thank you for your hard work on getting it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Roach.
You know, I was done, but I did want to add one more thing about the hetch-hetchy water, because I think it was even mentioned by one of the, one of the community members tonight, that, you know, we understand that Hayward has this great deal for hetch-hetchy water. We're sort of an original signer, I think, into it. And I want to be clear, this decision doesn't in any way affect that original agreement that we have, right? I can ask you that both.
It will not.
Okay, so just, thank you so much.
Councilmember Bonia.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to thank you, Director Mary, for your work on this and your staff's work on this. You know, Hayward's water is a real point of pride, I think, for all of us. I completed the WELL program recently, the Untapped Program, the Water Education for Latino Leaders. And one of the things that I was really proud about was the agreement that we have, and I worked with you to understand more about that and the partnership we have with Boska, and how we get water from the hetchy-hetchy, and what a clean source of water that is. So I know tonight we talked about a lot of different things in this meeting, but I think the one thing that Hayward could remain very prideful of is the high quality of water we have and the amazing high quality of water infrastructure that we have that pipes that water to our homes. So thank you so much for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a public comment card. Can I just put that public comment card away, or did you have more?
Absolutely, yes. That was, that was the extent of my public comments. I will add, in response to Councilmember Bonia, we offer, we facilitate tours of the hetch-hetchy water system with San Francisco on an annual basis, and sometimes we can squeeze in two tours. We would love to have any of the council members join us, and we often have public officials on those tours. So you're very welcome to come with us and see what that system's all about.
Thank you. Okay, and then the city manager, interim city manager, had a comment regarding item 11.
Sorry, actually about item number 10.
Oh.
There is, there is an attachment number two. There is a correction at the end. It says there's an attachment, which is Exhibit A, there is no attachment, so that needs to be just ignored. We will take it out.
Okay, okay, okay. So with that said, I don't have any more public comments on that. I'll ask, are there any public comments in the audience? There is no, I don't have any cards, and let's see, public comment. I do have one public comment. Ustaf Gupta.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, thank you so much. Hi, my name is Ustaf Gupta. I'm speaking in my personal capacity as a concerned Bay Area resident, commenting on consent item number 10, the water supply agreement that's on your agenda tonight. I am requesting that you pull it from the consent calendar so that it can have a fulsome discussion with public input. I think that's especially important, given tonight's discussion about budget pressures. I think the public should hear a full explanation of the financial impacts. In Palo Alto, we are moving to ask our city council to reconsider this item. Our umbrella association for residents, which is called Palo Alto Neighborhoods, and several community leaders have now endorsed reconsideration, and the reason is clear. The cost estimates provided to all of us are significantly understated. You have been told that this amendment will cost Hayward between $44,000 and $284,000 per year, but Boska has not released any underlying math supporting that estimate. Our independent review of the actual minimum purchase quantity reductions shows that the direct cost to Hayward is much higher, up to $1.33 million per year. And here's the reason for that gap. The amendment allows the four agencies to lower their minimum water purchases by 6.34 million gallons per day, which is about a 21% reduction. That will leave us on the hook for about $17.8 million. And Hayward and Palo Alto and others will be responsible for covering their shares of that deficit. The $4 million of imputed sales that was referenced, I believe by your city manager, is only for two of the four agencies that are reducing the minimum purchase requirements. And even when you look at only those $4 million of imputed sales, it does not account for even the top end of the Boska figure. So that's why the Boska figure seems like the math is wrong, because you have four agencies now that are reducing their minimum purchases. The $1.33 million is only the beginning. There are risks that could raise costs to as much as $16 million per year just for Hayward. First, in 2034, there was a 10-year reset where those four agencies can negotiate even lower minimums. If they get 80% of their current, of the current NPQs, of the proposed NPQs, that would be another $1.2 million annually for Hayward. There was a reference that this supports conservation. That's the same problem. When you conserve water, you're reducing purchases to the system, and that means that the other agencies have to cover the shortfall because SFPUC is mostly a fixed-cost system. And this is happening in context where we're seeing large water bills across the Bay Area from other places too. So please pull this from your consent calendar so that we can have a full public conversation about this and get information concerning the financial estimates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Pat Showalter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I'm Pat Showalter. I'm a city council member from the city of Mountain View, and I'm our representative on the Boska board. It's a pleasure to serve with Angela Andrews. I've really been impressed by the quality of the questions she asks. She's doing a great job representing Hayward. I also want to thank our water management reps, who've met for many years to work this agreement out. I understand that Alex Amery represents Hayward and has been a strong force in that group. So these two, you know, these two tier agreements that you're talking about tonight, they really represent a tremendous amount of thought and work. And all of the water management reps have had many opportunities to go over these figures and discuss them. So they're not, they're not, they're not new, or, they've been very, very well-vetted, is what I want to say. And then the other thing I want to share is just the plug for conservation. I think water, we all, we all share the value that water conservation is a good thing. And these water supply amendments are really designed to encourage water conservation. And collectively, using less water means there's less stress on the SPUC hetch-hetchy system, and it means there's less need for San Francisco to build alternative water supply projects. And that's going to save us a lot of money in the long run. So I respectfully request that you vote yes for this, and I look forward to working with Hayward through Boska in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't have any more callers. There are no more cards, or I don't have any cards. So I'd like to return back up to the dais, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move the item.
I'll second the item, and I also just want to thank Councilmember Andrews for her work on Boska and for, to reiterate the comments that we heard from the caller. Thanks, Councilmember Andrews.
Is this just for 10?
I'm sorry?
Is this just for?
No, this is the whole consent calendar.
Can we just vote on 10 separately?
Wait, hold on a second. Do we have to vote? We can vote for the whole consent calendar. We don't need to vote by.
Well, I would like to vote on 10 separately.
I'm sorry?
I would like to vote on 10 separately.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll vote on 10 separately.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. Item 11 has two revised resolutions as well.
Okay, so vote for 11 separate, then?
If you wish.
Okay.
And I don't know if staff wants to address the two revised resolutions.
Okay. Yes, I'll do one through, one through nine first, and then 10, and then 11, okay? So a motion for one through nine.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Bonia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cyrep, and if there are no objections, it will unanimously pass. Next item is item number 10, to entertain a motion. Oh.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Councilmember Andrews. What just popped up on our iPads, because that was confusing.
One through nine.
No, wait, hold on a second, hold on a second. I saw 10, yeah.
Just for the record, and we'll fix that, the prior vote was for items one through nine.
Okay, and then I was recorded as a no on that prior vote, but I'm a yes on the one through nine consent. That's why I was confused by what just showed up on the iPad.
We'll go ahead and show that as seven.
Okay.
For items one through nine.
Okay, so items one through nine, just for clarification, items one through nine was a unanimous yes. Okay, now item 10. Moved by Councilmember Bonia, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. Moved by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Bonia, and Madam City Clerk. And then item passes with six yeses and one no. Next is item 11, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Mayor Protem Roach.
I'll second, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Bonia, and Madam City Clerk, please take a roll. And it passes unanimously with seven eye votes. Thank you. Next, we move to our work session. This is a standing item for every council meeting. This is a city budget status update, oral report by the city manager as information becomes available. And interim city manager, Adelman, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be a quick report. This, we continued, I mean, staff continues to be focused on labor negotiations and the voluntary separation incentive plan. We are hoping to obtain savings of $6,747,495 through personnel-related savings, and this includes voluntary separations, concessions from labor, and as a last resort layoffs. And this also includes the furloughs for unrepresented and executive team members. And with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Deanne Hillbrands.
So as far as ongoing work, in the Finance Department, we're doing quite a bit of work, both working closely with Human Resources as we work through labor negotiations, costing proposals. We also have our budget team hard at work, Nick, Fran, and our Deputy Director Christina, working to basically reset the budget. So when we met with you last month, which was really only a couple of weeks ago, we recognized that we needed to reset our revenue estimates, decreasing those estimates by over $6 million, modifying the transfer from Measure C, making some other changes to other transfers. We're working on, through some one-time revenues. Our Revenue Manager is also supporting our plans to come back to in February with some proposed revenue options. We've taken some additional actions to reduce overtime and freeze vacancies to save funds. Departments have done an exercise to reduce service and supplies in some areas. And you'll see in the next couple of weeks, a council item to consider increasing the TOT will be doing outreach to hotels and the public in the, in the coming weeks as well. In terms of timelines, so again, November 18th, just before the holiday closure, we presented a fall revision, recognized a budget gap of about $26.4 million. And since that time, and even before that time, we are continuing discussions with our labor partners. We've been implementing cost-saving measures, adding them to our amended budget, preparing for a large February update. And again, in February, we expect to present you that updated five-year model, a fiscal sustainability plan, the details of how we achieve that $26.4 million gap, how we close that gap to zero, and identify any potential revenue measures for your consideration, including any steps you would need to take. So this is a lot of ongoing work. Really want to recognize the staff in both HR and Finance. Our accounting team is still working hard at work, preparing for, to close, to finish the audit. That has taken some additional time. It has been paused, but they're still working in the background on quite a few items. Payroll team doing a lot of work to help cost the proposals from our labor unions. So really appreciate your support as we go through this process.
Is that it? Okay, all right. Okay, so this is a work session, so let me open up for council, or actually, me opening up for public comment first. I don't have any cards, and there is no public comment online, so I will close public comment and come to the dais, and Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you for the update. I really appreciate having this as an ongoing discussion. Wanted to know if it's possible if we can start seeing staff reports with the budget update, even if it's minimal in terms of what information that can be provided at this time, given that you're still assessing, but something to, for us to review prior to the meeting?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay, great.
Just give you a status update.
Yep, great. And then I understand you're looking at five-year projections. When do we expect to see 10-year projections, like, just a ballpark, when we expect to see that?
I think that what I've seen in terms of our model so far is a five-year, but typically adding the additional years isn't significant. We can, we should be able to kind of append those on. I don't know that we'll get to that for February. It just depends on the level of activities will be focused on revenue measures, but I, perhaps for the next budget cycle, we can have something more like that.
Okay, and I know that we look at projects for the CIP. I was wondering if that can be brought to us as well, just as we are looking at just different funds and making sure that they're healthy, if we can see projections for the 10-year CIP? Is that possible? And then also, can we look at the five-year projections for all funds, not just the general fund?
Initially, I think in February, we'll be looking at the general fund and funds that, one of our consultants calls it, and friends, so internal service funds and that type of thing. I would work with Alex in terms of, Public Works Director, in terms of looking at a longer-term capital projects model. So I can't really give a timeline for that, but I can definitely have that conversation, and perhaps include that in the next update.
And can we also see a timeline or strategy from the Economic Development Department about how we're going to communicate the TOT and what services we can provide for the hotels as we are starting to see more activity as it relates to sports and entertainment that's happening in the Bay Area with very significant events that are coming to the area? Just want to see how there, what is the strategy in partnering with either business groups or SBDA, someone that can help support us?
We can certainly work with Baldwin to come up with something like that, yeah.
Okay, and then when you bring revenue strategies, can we also look at what we're seeing similar to SF, with permit SF and cutting the red tape initiatives that we're seeing locally? Can we push our, our planning and public safety review of new projects that are coming in? Can we bring those strategies as part of the revenue strategies we should see?
Yeah, so we, as part of the February meeting, we can have, you know, I think that they've done a couple of memos that we can do. We can have a briefing specifically on that item as part of the February one.
I think we reviewed ordinances. I would like to see. I think we reviewed ordinances. I would like to see operations, to see what we're doing. So same-day permits, those type of things, what, what, what can we do? And then also, wanted to know, when can we look at the strategic roadmap, strategic roadmap to see what projects we're going to reduce and what programs we're going to reduce that will inform the, the budget update?
That's something that we'll bring forward after the new year.
So before February?
I think probably at least in February, so we've got some information based on the latest review of the fall revise about projects that might need to come off of the plate. And so we just want to do another quick review once we have information about individuals taking the voluntary separation incentive program, et cetera, so that we can do a final sweep of that before we bring forward anything.
Okay, and then what is our estimate in terms of dates of when we're going to be working with HARD for looking at La Vista Park and other projects that could reduce impact to the general fund in Measure C?
So I know Director Mary, we've got a planned a meeting, that we're going to be meeting with the HARD board, and also Director Mary and Jim Wheeler have been talking, so we will bring that back. I don't have an exact date right now, but we will, I'll talk to them and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Council, Councilmembers, your menu.
Mayor, thank you very much. Any progress report on areas that we were thinking about selling?
Yeah, so the activities right now are, well, mostly what we're doing right now is getting appraisals so that we can bring you guys the estimated market value of things and, and understand also sort of the timing. You know, we are monitoring if the Fed's possibly going to reduce interest rates. There's not, the market's not great right now, so we're sort of keeping that all in mind, but that is all, all activities planned for the spring.
All right.
And we have a full plan for property disposition.
So eventually we'll have a report as to what particular areas, et cetera.
Yeah, also in, in February, but the main, the main, just so you know, well, yeah, so there, there's some main properties and we can give a briefing for council.
And that would include any efforts on the theater, on the cinema?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Okay, what efforts are we going to put into some kind of overtime diet to our employees?
Yeah, so there's already been quite a few operational efforts in, particularly in our public safety units to, to reduce overtime, and we have seen that impact on our payroll. We have started to see some declines, and I think there's more, more efforts to come this spring.
Okay, all right, and there's one other area where we are licking dollars pretty badly, so I wonder if, if we can, what efforts we can do to have our residents spend their money on, not on illegal street vendors, but on bona fide businesses. We have something like 78 businesses out on the street, full-pledged restaurants on the open, and these are, our residents are spending money there, and we are receiving nothing in return. And that's a loss of our dollars. Any efforts we can work on, anything planned on this?
I think there's ongoing, there are ongoing efforts. We provided some updates to council on this, but we can provide another, another update on sort of any recent activities that have happened around monitoring street vendors.
I mean, when I say shop Hayward first, I actually mean shop Hayward businesses, not folks out of Sacramento or San Jose who are illegally here, so, thank you. And let's keep, and thank you for doing this every time we meet. Things important.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Roach.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for continuing to bring this to us. Obviously, we need to keep talking about it. I wanted to ask about the earlier comments about per diem employees, because, you know, we did make that, we did give that authority to staff, that that is one level of play that we'll be looking at as we try to make cuts. But can you speak to kind of the whole holistic nature of how we are going to be looking at this? Because my understanding, it's not like a flat cut, right? Like, there has to be, it's per department. Could somebody speak to that about the concern, you know, that was raised earlier about what this means?
Yes, and so what has to happen is a review of each individual MOU, and it's not just a across-the-board cut. It is a lot more strategic than was implied from the comments. Each department is going to look at the positions and the functions that they can perhaps curtail. They're going to make sure that they're keeping in place things that are essential, that are required by law, that are required by MOUs. And where there can be modifications, they will then look at the classifications that are going to be impacted. And then based on the MOU, the language of the MOU needs to be followed. And so I think the confusion may be when we say we might be getting rid of temporary staff or provisional staff, that needs to be based on the classification first. And so if we were looking to impact a full-time animal care specialist, then potentially based on that MOU, we might be required to first let go of temporaries, then probationary, then provisional, before we would be able to impact that animal care specialist. And so, you know, just to be specific, and we can ask the, the Chief of Police once again, but we haven't had any conversations about the reductions in animal services. And in particular, if they only have one animal care specialist, if that's the actual classification, it's unlikely that that position would be impacted, and therefore, it's unlikely that the provisional or temporary staff that hold those per diem titles would be affected. So it really is about what functions need to be curtailed based on operational needs, and then what classifications need to be impacted. And then that specific classification, we need to look at the individuals that fall in the line of succession according to the MOU.
Thank you, that is so helpful, and I hope, I hope Ms. Comstock heard that, and that the chief, they can have those discussions about whether this is, you know, how this will affect the per diem employees. Like, given that we all know there are going to be cuts, but thank you for answering that question, because I think even the community, they're not here to hear, but I think they need to hear that there's no sort of like, first, everyone goes, every, every per diem goes, because my understanding is, in looking at this in a holistic way, is we're not going to be cutting off our nose to spite our face, right? We're not going to be getting rid of a per diem employee that's going to actually cost us more money, you know, in the backend somewhere. Like, I assume that's all part of the calculus here.
Yes, and I want to give space for the interim city manager.
No, I was just going to say, but keeping in mind that exactly what you had said earlier is that we are looking at it holistically, and right now, we are not, we haven't targeted any specific group, but we don't want to guarantee that there won't be cuts in specific areas, so just to make that clear.
Thank you, and I, I thank you for saying that, because I agree, like, it doesn't mean, like, I'm interpreting that to mean all eight employees per diems won't be cut, just like in every department, but maybe some of them will be, right? Because that's the pain we're all going to face. And I, and I think this is true in the dispatch center, you know, they were really hurting during COVID and they really needed extra employees. And I mean, that's another really big area of concern, and I wouldn't want to see the relief that they got from, from temporary employees to come in. So I think that there's sort of pain all around, and my hope in this process is, you know, unfortunately, everyone takes a little bit of hit, but not ever, not, the entire shelter staff is not going to go away, is my hope. And, and I assume that's sort of the goal here as well. Thank you. And then my other, I have another question around, I know that our job is to move forward, and you're all doing that, and I thank you for that, right, that we're, we just have to face the reality we're in now and make the cuts that we can make and move forward. But we, we do have to keep in mind, you know, there has to be a sort of like aftermath, like how to look back at this. And, and a couple of the questions I have to that end is, at the time, I was told that the ARPA dollars were, were used as one-time funds, and, and we didn't put it in the general fund, and it didn't, so we, we did this right. But I'm understanding now that potentially, under that crisis situation and COVID, that we did pay for positions with ARPA dollars, knowing they were one-time funds. And I, and I'm wondering, is that true, and were those positions simply not ended, and then those just got incorporated into the general fund?
Yeah, so what effectively happened was we balanced the deficit using ARPA funds, and we, the, the explanation that you can use the federal government was we were using it to rebuild, rebuild our reserves, which is an acceptable use, but that is one-time money, and the deficit was created by having more expenses than revenue. And so effectively, we were paying for positions by, by doing it that way. We can't say specifically, like, it was just sort of went to the general fund in general. There wasn't like a specific position by position, but the fact that we were using it to balance our, our deficit in the general fund, yeah.
So I said the structural issue was still there when we did that?
Yeah, that's, that, that means we were using it for the structural issue, not for like one-time projects, in that case.
Okay, I see, okay. And then, and then along the same lines of sort of how we look further in the future is, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the HART program, and we understand from the Fire, Fire Department, the previous chief came our way and said, you know, they're funding it entirely on overtime, and so asked us to sort of cut that program for now until we could find further funding. And so I just want to go back to that one a little bit, that, that was approved as a pilot project. And I'm wondering, does anyone remember, like, how long was that pilot project supposed to be? And is it true that there was no funding mechanism created when that pilot project was approved?
Yeah, so, yeah, it was, it was, it was all, it was designed to be temporary, to try, try it out, and there was never, you know, year after year, there was sort of a renewal of what, of the budget for that project, but it was always on a year-to-year basis, so there was never permanent funding put into it.
When the pilot project was originally approved, like, what was it supposed to be, a year? I mean, what was that pilot?
That was more or less the intent. There's some, yeah, was, was a year, two years, I think, was what we ended up funding it for, and then we came back and did it again, so.
And since there was never funding, you know, directed to the Fire Department, they used overtime funds, and so now we've stopped that. What, what, what's happening in the Police Department of that funding? I mean, is that, so my understanding, that's just been used with salary savings, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Chief, I just, I, I just, I'm trying to, I want to learn from the past while we do the hard work of moving forward, because if we had a, you know, a pilot project that was supposed to be short-term, and there was no funding, and now it's, you know, you're using salary savings for that, what does that do to your ability to, you know, continue to move forward and balance your budget?
Sure, and just for clarification, there, there are aspects of the HART program that are still up and running. We still have officers riding with clinicians from the Alameda County Behavioral Health Group, and then we still have counselors from the LINK program who are out doing case management with some of our most vulnerable community members. The LINK positions are funded with vacant police officer positions, and that's been, I think, true from the outset, when the SRO program was discontinued. Those positions were repurposed to be able to do some of the work for the HART program. The, the MET, or the Mobile Evaluation Team, the trained police officer and the behavioral health clinician, that's still running five days a week, and that's primarily using existing staff during business hours who are repurposed from our district operations. There are occasions where, you know, overtime has been used for that. In fact, a lot of that was funded by overtime in the past. We're dialing that back, but a lot of the work is still being done.
I see, so like, the HART program doesn't exist, or the MEU doesn't exist as a line item in your budget? It's just salary savings goes to that.
We're using existing staff positions to do that work.
Okay, and I'm not trying to end the program, I'm just, I want to learn from the past, right, how we got here in some of this stuff.
And I think, and there is some grant funding that it goes to this year, so I think if this is something you guys really are interested in, we can provide a follow-up email about exactly how.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be helpful, I'm, I'm not trying, I mean, you know, it was a shame we had to lose the Fire Department version of it. It would be, you know, I want to keep the LINK program going, so, just trying to understand. Thank you, Chief, yeah. Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, like, as we do this work and as we learn these lessons, I think I'm, I just, I, I don't, I, I, I don't, I do, I don't want to blame anyone, I just want to know how we got here, right? And I think some of it, we absolutely do know, we know it, but I worry that, I think what we're all finding is there was a structural problem that has gone on for years. We made some bad decisions to sort of exacerbate that, and then we were all sort of caught with our pants down when, when revenue went down, right? Because I think a lot of this stuff has just been covered over by surplus revenue, right? So while you're going through this, and maybe, you know, as our new finance director is here, that while you're doing that, you, you can help us understand the lessons that you see, right, as you're coming in from an objective point of view? Yeah, that's the intention, is, as a part of February, at a high level, that we'll, we'll give you some insight as to kind of how we got to here. Okay. As well as the going forward. We'll focus on the going forward. Yeah. But in doing, in, in going forward, you do look back. Yeah, I mean, I think we need that, because, you know, you heard, right, there's lots of accusations flying around how we got here, and of course, the buck stops with us, but we can't do better if we don't know, like, how we got here, right? And what, how we can sort of be sure that if we're looking at a spreadsheet and it's missing, you know, you know, some large amount of overtime or something, that we know how to look for that.
And I think one thing, to your, to the point on the revenue, use of, use of one-time funding for, you know, our structural operating budget. One thing that Deanna did on the 18th that I think we'll continue to do moving forward is separate out the one-time items, so that you're seeing, you know, you're seeing your annual revenues, and then you're seeing everything that's one-time separated out, so you're clear that that's not available in the future.
Thank, I mean, I think that's a practice we obviously need to be better at, so thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this report and for all of these questions. I know it's late, so I'll be brief in my questions, but I did, you know, have similar questions around, you know, ARPA that I kind of want to understand too, just looking back, because I do know that an acceptable use of ARPA funds was to replenish, you know, kind of what we're calling, you know, lost revenue, right? And then, so I can see how if we had anticipated one-time lost revenue, you put that money towards those things, but if you never get that revenue back, and you're just constantly putting those ARPA funds there to plug the hole, you can start to see where that creates more of that structural imbalance. So it would be good to see when that started to happen, so that we can kind of just follow the trail to sort of understand how that further got exacerbated by decisions we made, and how in the future, you know, we can make sure that we have some kind of early warnings built into that process to understand, like you were just saying, these ongoing revenue sources versus one-time revenue, and then also understanding what that one-time revenue is tied to, and how long we have that one-time revenue to make sure that projects that are funded for the duration of that revenue don't then exceed that, and then go into the general fund unknowingly, and then we get into situations where we create this imbalance that then further gets exacerbated. And speaking of that imbalance, how are we, I know we're tracking pretty closely, you know, budget, not even budget, but really actuals to projections. How is that coming through? I know that you gave us this long list of, you know, things that we're hoping to achieve, or not hoping, because we have plans to achieve these savings, but are those being realized? And, you know, if we're thinking we're getting $2 million in service reductions and overtime reductions, are you seeing the trend align with those savings to be able to hit those targets by the end of June?
So we won't necessarily see them until January. That's, that's some of what's challenging. And in January, we may have, you know, an increase if people voluntarily separate, or if there's layoffs, you know, an increase in leave payouts. But one of the critical steps that our team is taking in the background is to basically realign the budget so that it's more meaningful to the, to the department heads to manage within their own department, and, and, and they can see on their side if they need to take additional action. So we'd be looking at, I keep using the easy number, if, if we said in, in six months, we'll cut $1.2 million, then each month, I should see $200,000-ish.
And I guess I'm wondering, are you starting to see any of those trends now? Because I don't think we're looking to cut all $26 million between January and June. I believe some actions have been taken already to start to realize some of those savings. So my question is, have the savings we realized aligned with the projected amount of savings we expected to realize? Or is that off or not?
For example, we, we reflected in our, in our November report, $10 million in salary savings. It's not part of the $26.4, so that's kind of already happening. So that's the type of activity we're seeing. We're monitoring payrolls every two weeks instead of just looking at them every few months, and, and we're seeing those changes, which is likely primarily overtime and, you know, and then vacancy savings. So we, we are monitoring at that level because payroll is our biggest expense. You could, you could run kind of cash payouts and just see really big numbers coming out of the general fund. So we're looking at it in that way, so it's a little bit micro, super-micro, and then we've got to get it at a macro level, and then we need to have good information for our department heads so that they have better understanding and can manage it at the same time.
Okay, because I think it would be helpful for us to sort of see how we're trending against each of these goals, and I know we've talked about that earlier, and I don't want to steal Councilmember Andrews', you know, thunder there, because I know she was looking for that too, but if we have, you know, whatever that slide was, you know, we have like those eight different categories, if we can start getting a barometer on how close we are to achieving the savings across each of those categories as part of these meetings, that would be really useful so that we know in March, you know, are we 60% of the way there, or are we only 20% of the way there? So I, I think that would be helpful going forward. And then also, don't want to really harp on it, but just want to leave it for something for us to think about. How do we, and I know there's a lot of communication going on around the budget, right? So I really do appreciate that. So, I guess, how do we strengthen already good communication that's happening to prevent perhaps miscommunication at the level that we saw tonight? Because I almost, what happened tonight, I think what, I, I don't want to stipulate what happened or why it happened, but I feel like it could have been prevented with better communication. So I would just like staff to go back and think through how we're communicating at all levels of the city, how the department heads are communicating with their direct reports, and how everybody is singing to the same sheet of music, because this isn't just happening in the animal services, it's happening across community services, because I've dealt with emails about this, and it's happening in other places. So I'm wondering, how would So I'm wondering, how do we center ourselves around a standard set of talking points that, that are truthful and that align with what's currently happening, that could then be cascaded, so that we don't, so that we don't end up in further misinformation funnels that then turn into what we saw tonight? I'll just leave that as something to think about. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good point.
Can I, can I, I think, just, it's super, I think we can absolutely create, start creating those reports and having definitely something for February, you can try and pull something for January. In terms of just wanting to make sure that we're respecting finance staff time and NHR staff, it's only been five working days since we presented the budget, the budget work session to you guys. And so the ability to, to go in and be constantly tracking actuals, we also only, we repay our bills every other week, and we do, and then on the opposite other, other week, we do our payroll. So we're not going to actually be able to see things like super in real time. There, there is sort of this two-week lag. So I think we can absolutely do that, and we can report back on what we're seeing. But there will be, you know, it won't be instantaneous.
Yeah, and I, and I think I'm just looking for more trend data, right? I'm not even looking for the type of, you know, data that we, that was referenced. I'm just looking for generally, are we trending at the right level? You know, if we're off a couple, whatever, that's fine, right? There's going to be a margin of error that's built into these projections, but are we, you know, on or off? And then my last comment is, you know, I also want us to start looking at, and I'm sure we are, but what kind of short-term investments might, might we be able to make for kind of longer-term financial gains later? So one of the things that I'm thinking about, and I'm not sure if this is even feasible here in Hayward, but I know San Francisco did it, because my partner just got a warning ticket. But if you go speeding down certain streets of San Francisco, they have like automated street cameras that will write you a ticket now. Oakland just did the exact same thing. I think everybody at this dais recognizes that Hayward is, we run red lights in Hayward all the time. Not us up here, but people in this community do. We also speed in Hayward very frequently, and we don't have cops, you know, dealing with that the way that, you know, we should because of these funding issues. So what would it look like? I mean, for us to start to think about how we leverage technology in different ways, and how we might invest in short-term, you know, investments now that would get us longer-term, more sustainable revenue sources coming in, and might change some behavior in our community, and, and make things a little bit safer. So just something else to consider, not to talk about tonight, but just to consider as we look at these strategies.
Yeah, you'll see some of, some of those types of things in, in February. We still welcome ideas that maybe we haven't seen or thought of. But we've, we've had some internal discussions, and are already working on putting some of that together. So, you know, welcome anything, whether we think we should know it or not, we're happy to receive, receive that insight. And, you know, we'll be working with the attorney's office in terms of what does it take to do this, as well as the practicalities.
Thank you. Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you. Thank you for this report, and thank you for the work that you're doing around the clock to try to help get a grip on our budget deficit. Just on the topic of revenue generation, the technology that Councilmember Bonilla is referring to is speed-limiting, speed-limiting cameras. I'm a supporter of those too. And I think there's a statewide pilot happening that we're not part of, unfortunately. We can't install them until that pilot's complete. So I think just something legislatively, we want to talk to our lobbyists about, so that we can participate in that, not just for the revenue generation, but also for the community safety. For the public's knowledge, we've done red light cameras in the past. It was actually the police department that discontinued them, because it led to people being rear-ended en masse, and also spent a lot of police time reviewing red lights that were really just right turns on red lights. And so it's not the best use of police time either. So I just wanted to throw that out there for, for the sake of clarity. But also on the topic of revenue generation, we had a work session not too long ago with economic development, where we had shared perspectives on ways that we could get out of our own way, by revisiting some past ordinances that might be limiting our ability to generate revenue. What's happening with that conversation? And how quickly can we make those adjustments?
I think you're talking about the improved, I can't remember the exact.
Business-friendly Hayward work session.
Right. And so they are going to come back on, in the end of January.
Okay.
And so you will get another report then.
Great.
It's going to go to the planning commission first, and then come back to you. And then we can continue to talk about how to, how to improve that.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my last comment here, without belaboring the points that my colleagues made, which I agree with, is the, the general desire for more reporting, I think, is a difficult ask, because you're human like us, you only have 24 hours in the day, and, you know, you're doing your best to try to address the meat of the deficit. But I, I think what I'd like to understand is just, rather, I think I'm feeling a sense of kind of bubbling frustration around not being able to level set around expectations. So a lot of different kinds of reports have been requested tonight. I'm curious which ones we think are, like, you've heard what we think might be the most valuable. From the staff perspective, what kind of reporting mechanism feels the most meaningful or valuable to you? What can we build out over time? I, I don't want to give the impression that, at least for myself, I need all of this information tomorrow, because it feels unreasonable, and just sets us up for disappointing each other, and ultimately disappointing the community. So I guess my request, and this isn't necessarily asked unless you want to comment on it, is, you know, how, can you help communicate to us what reporting makes sense to roll out when? So we know when to expect it, and it's not something we have to keep asking for. And we're also getting reporting that's, that's meaningful. Because just for example, I think it's great that we're going to have, you know, a five-year model. I like the idea of a 10-year projection, but as, as you know, you know, we have really difficult conversations with labor coming up. So every conversation is going to drastically change that 10-year projection. So I, I'm not as married to the 10-year right now. I'd like a five-year, but, you know, I want reporting that's useful, I think is what I'm saying here. So I'd love staff's perspective on what, what reporting is useful, and when we can roll out and build out that reporting. Does that, does that make sense?
So I think it's a good topic for us to go back and discuss among ourselves, and really talk to you about what we think is practical and useful. And so maybe give you kind of a table of this, give you this quarterly, give you this maybe every, once a month or whatever. So maybe we can come up with something, we've heard what you're asking for, and then really talk about is, is what is going to be useful and practical. And so we can bring that back to you.
Okay, thanks. Because, yeah, I, I don't want to also be in a position where I'm, you know, giving a bunch of direction here that isn't feasible, and setting us up for, for failure and frustration. I understand that you're working hard on the core issue of this deficit. So just wanted to add in my two cents there, but thank you for this, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes, I wanted to know, in the Budget and Finance Committee, previously, did you all get to see 10-year projections? Was that a regular report? I think it should be. If we can get that as a regular report, that'd be great. And then maybe we can look at it quarterly here. I hope that would help reduce some of the pressure, but we should be getting 10-year projections as a report. Wanted to also know about that, not just the permit at planning, but also looking at fire, building safety, and reducing red tape in those departments, to confirm if that would be part of the red tape reducing strategies? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for all the hard work that you and staff are doing. We, we, we feel your pain. We, we do. Couple of things I wanted to reiterate. Having a barometer that Councilmember Bonilla spoke of is something that will really help us articulate to our constituents where we're at. It'll also help us get our arms around where we're headed, and how quickly we're getting there. Not to make it a big burden, but like, a simple slide that says the target, this is how far we've gone, this is what we're looking at, what, what we think, the adjustment that we just described in our meeting, what, what we think that we're going to accomplish with that. So not a lot of effort, I hope, but just a single slide will really go a long way to helping us figure out how much more we need to do. And that helps us figure out how much more help you need from us. That also helps us communicate that out to our constituents. We're fighting a big battle, but we're doing this together. And this will really go a long way to helping us. So I hope you'll take that to heart, and in our next budget discussion next week, that we'll have some kind of a barometer. I also support really talking to our department heads about technology that can save money, and also make their jobs easier, right? It's like, we don't want to stress them out, especially if we're talking about cutting staff, but we need to figure out where the technology investments are that are going to help us get ahead of this curve. And eventually, we can start building up staff again. So not technology to take jobs away, but to make the jobs easier for the people that are here. And then my final comment is, is, is this. Economic development is not tourism. And so we have a problem on our hands. And that is, we've got some major sport events that are happening in the Bay Area. And to my knowledge, we have nobody who is currently providing insight into how we are going to market for tourism for Hayward. So correct me if I'm wrong, if you've had that conversation with Paul, because I'll tell you quite frankly, I did about six months ago. And he said tourism is not on his plate. And so if you want to open up that conversation for tourism with, with economic development, I would strongly suggest you also consider perhaps talking to the Chamber of Commerce, and seeing if that's something that they have the skill. And if not, perhaps a third party. But there's a lot to gain, I think, and a lot to lose. And I hate to throw one more thing on your plate, I really do. But tourism is not the same thing as economic development, and there's a lot to gain here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just, I, I don't want to, I'm trying not to, well, I'm going to repeat just a couple of things, but I, one is, Mayor Pro Tim Roach brought up, you know, lessons learned. And one idea I was thinking about was, next year, when we do our priority setting, Saturday or, you know, the, the day that we set aside for that, is that we spend a, a great deal of the day talking about, you know, lessons learned, and, and sort of, you know, having a very rich conversation around how did we get here? And I think, so that we, you know, so that we're not ever here again. And so, so anyways, I want to just put that on, put that on the table. Secondly, I, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Bonilla. There needs to be a cohesive, cogent message. I don't know how frequent, I don't, you know, I don't know if it's every Friday, or every other, you know, every other week. But, you know, tonight could have easily been avoided if, you know, if we had a very cogent message. I mean, I, I heard, I mean, I, there were just clearly, clearly false statements made tonight about people being fired. I mean, we had, we had, one speaker made, made a comment that eight per diem employees were, were fired over the la, I mean, that's just wrong. I mean, it's, it was just flat-out wrong. And so there ha, you know, there has to be a, a place where we can get a cohesive message that not only the council receives, but that we can easily disseminate amongst, you know, our constituencies, or amongst, you know, people who inquire about this. And lastly, useful reporting. I know we could very easily ask for a lot of data up here, we can ask for a lot of information. Yes, we can, we can task you with, you know, every, you know, every budget piece of information out there. But I want it, what I'd like for you to think about is, what would be the most useful for us as a council at a 30,000-mile level, when we're having policy discussions out in the community? When people talk to us, I think people are expecting direction. What direction are we, are we going? What direction are we, are we, are we taking? And so, so anyways, I, that is a discussion I heard that you're going to have, as long as it's useful. And of course, I'm sure you'll be taking our feedback and so forth. I also want to end, want to end with this. You know, there, there's always a question, and there's always a lot of talk around transparency. And, you know, I, I, the other day, I actually went to the dictionary to look up what transparency meant. Because people use it for a lot of different things, and they use it against us, they used it, you know, with us, or what. But transparency in, in, in the definition is clear, honest, open information. That's it. Clear, honest, open information. That's what transparency means. And I think, since this issue has, you know, occurred, since this has happened, you know, one thing that I want to appreciate staff with is that we have been open, we have been as clear as possible, and, and we have been honest. If you just listened to the questions that we've asked up here tonight, if you heard, if you listened to the, if you watched the meeting that happened a couple of weeks ago, you saw it. And, and I think this process, this council has been committed to a, a, a open, a clear, and honest process. And so I wanted to thank council, or thank the executive team, and thank you staff for enabling us to do that up here. Because I am pretty confident in, in, in the work that we've been doing, in making sure that the community understands the situation, and understands how we're trying to solve this. So with that, I don't have any other comments, so I will close this item. And it is a work session, so I will move on and proceed to item number 12, which is council, it's, item 13, LB25-042, Council Appointed Officers Employment Agreement. Adopt a resolution approving amendments to the employment agreement between the City of Hayward and interim city manager, Giante Adelman, and authorize the mayor to execute the amendment. And the report is coming from me, though I, because I chair the CAOC. And the staff report reflects a slight change in the agreement between the city council and the city manager. There was a, an original intent in the city manager's contract that she would be in the role as interim city manager until December 31st. We went along a fully open process. We hired a new city manager. That city manager will start on Monday, on December 8th. And so the interim city manager will, on the 8th, return to her role as director of the library. And, and, I don't know how deep, more details I want, that I need to get, but the, 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 okay, so anyways, the, the library director will resume on, Giante Adelman will resume being the library director on the 8th, and the new city manager will start on the 8th. So with that said, I will move the, well, actually, if there's, see if there are any questions from council on this item. Seeing none, I will open up for public comment. There is no public comment here in the, in the chamber, and there is no public comment online. So I will close public comment. And what I'll do is, I will move this item, and I will wait for a second.
I'll second, Mayor.
Moved by Mayor Salinas, seconded by Councilmember Bonilla, and Madam City Clerk, if you can take the role. And item unanimously passes. Thank you. Next item is fiscal, is LB, is item number 14, LB25-045, Fiscal Year 2026 Salary Plan Amendment. Adoption, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Hayward Salary Plan for Fiscal Year 2026. And this report will be given to us by way of our Director Texon, and Director Texon.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. This item proposes an amendment to the salary plan for fiscal year 2026. The amendment adds the updated salary for the incoming city manager, which is effective for this pay period, December 1st, 2025. It's essentially a 2.08%. It's essentially a 2.08% increase to add an additional step in there. The impact to the general fund is $4,671. And with that, staff recommends this approval, and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. Open up for council questions. Councilmember Andrews.
How would the executive team 4% cut impact this, if it does it or not?
So the city manager has different cuts in, in her contract to equate, I believe it's a little more than 4%.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. There are no other questions. I'll open up for public comment. I don't have any cards. I don't see anyone online. I'd like to close public comment, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Roach, seconded by Councilmembers Zermeño. And if there are any, if there aren't any more questions, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll. And item unanimously passes with seven eye votes. Thank you. Next item is council reports and announcements. Councilmember Andrews.
I just want to give a reminder of, I think, Light of the Season is this Saturday?
Saturday.
So it starts at 4:00, but tree lighting is at 5:00. Did I get that correct? 4:45, okay. And then also, SantaCon is back. So following the ceremony, you can partake in businesses downtown to help support the Hayward Animal Shelter.
Thank you. Seeing no more council reports or announcements, I'll move on to council referrals. There are no council referrals. Next item is, or the next meeting will be December 16th, 2025. Ladies and gentlemen, meeting adjourned.